Aloha mai kalko, everyone. My name is Samantha Decort. I serve as the Chair of the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board, number thirty-six, and I'm calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are meeting in person at the Nanakuli Public Library and virtually on WebEx. We do have a full agenda tonight, so to keep our items moving, I will go over some rules of speaking. If anyone wishes to speak, I will ask that in-person attendees line up at the microphone, to my left, to your right. Those joining us on WebEx, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes, officials, monthly reports under three minutes, and presenters under ten minutes. Sergeant-at-Arms, who is taking care of her granddaughter, will not be with us tonight, but Jeffrey will be watching time for us. I will also ask that you conclude your comments when the timer goes off. I would like to remind everyone that this is a community forum, so we welcome all comments, concerns, questions, and even opinions. Be free to share your mana'o on our agenda items, and remember to treat others with respect and engage with the spirit of aloha. Before we start on our agenda, we're gonna ask Uncle Pa'ayo, Board Member Ayio, to open us up in Pule. Go ahead.
Good evening, Heavenly Father. We come to you today as a board, a community here in Nanakuli'a'a, Pu'a'a. As you look upon us, keep us here, keep us safe, keep us with kapu aloha. And we pray for those who might not be here yet, have them get here safely. For those of us in the community that have showed up to be president, to share their concerns. Father, please guide them also with your spirit, as we all say to our Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, and we all say, "Amen."
Amen, amen. Thank you so much, Board Member Ayio. First up, agenda item Honolulu Fire Department. If you can go ahead to the microphone and give your report, thank you guys so much for being here.
Good evening, everybody. Mike Morgan from Nanakuli Fire Station. I'll be going over last month's statistics, as well as this month's fire safety message. So for the month of March, we responded to one structure fire, four wildland brush fires, fifteen nuisance fires, and four activated alarms with no fire. We also responded to a hundred and four medical emergencies and four motor vehicle crashes or collisions. So for this month's fire safety message, it talks about evacuation planning. Have an emergency preparedness plan ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire, or natural disaster. Know two ways out of your home and consider the route you will take if you need to evacuate from your neighborhood due to an emergency. Visit fire.honolulu.gov to learn more. Also, leave early enough to avoid being caught in a fire, smoke, or road congestion. Establish a predetermined location, such as a well-prepared neighborhood, a relative's house, a low-risk area, or a shelter or evacuation center. And then take your emergency supply kit containing your family and pets' necessary items. That's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Board Members. Any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Board Member Corona?
Okay, okay. Thank you. So I think it was maybe a couple months ago, something was brought up about the fire department. As you leave Nanakuli Avenue, you come down, and the traffic light, it takes a long time to transition to green, especially during like school hours and stuff. An event where it happened, for you to get out, you gotta go around opposite side of the road to get out, and then potential causing problems. So as a transportation committee Chair, I reached out to the state and found out about their Opticon devices that work throughout the Leeward Coast. I think it was like out of twenty-four, six of them weren't functioning, but this one out here in Nanakuli Avenue is functioning. So then I asked about that. They said that the city controls the Opticon devices with inside the vehicles themselves. So my question is for you folks over here in Nanakuli Avenue. When you exit out, do you program the route before you leave? Or do you just even activate the Opticon? Or is it automatic in your fire, your service trucks?
So there's a button where you could manually turn it on and off. For us, we always leave it on. Yeah, it seems like there's only really one, like in Nanakuli, that actually works, and it's not Nanakuli'a'a.
Okay, good, because I'm trying to get DTS engaged in my transportation committee to address those things, because that was a concern. I want to make sure that if I, is, is, for HFD to, for me to continue to pursue that, to get the Opticon working, because it's the light that takes so long. And when you guys do exit, you do have to go into the opposite lane to try to get out and carver to come in. I've seen it before, so I know all about it, but I just want to make sure that your devices, that's what you do, you either press the button, or you leave it on all the time. But it appears that the Nanakuli Opticon device, either in your trucks don't work, or the device that's on the street doesn't work, because it broadcasts the signal.
I want to say it's probably the signal, because I'm pretty sure ours work, because the one light, I think it's Nani Kapono. That one, pretty much every time we come, like, within, yeah, immediately. I'm pretty sure on our side, it's working.
Okay, and that's the reason why I'm pushing it so much, is because, I'm almost done, Chair. The reason why I'm pushing it so much is because out of all the fire, the fire stations on the Leeward side, this is the only one that requires you to exit a community area onto fairing pin versus like YNI or something, just come straight out and go. So that's why, okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Board Member Corona, seeing no others. We have Board Member Nehomi Hano Hano Online and Ed Hano Hano Online. Seeing none public, any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Go ahead to the microphone, thank you. Please state your name for the minutes.
Yeah, Lord Chair, Vice Chair, whatever committee you get here. I just wanted to address, in fact, was this last week, counterflow time, I was on Haleakala, I mean Nanakuli'a', waiting for the light change. I think I was about maybe eight cars in line. EMS was trying to get down from the avenue, and apparently they almost slammed into one Silverado red truck coming up. This is about like the, maybe four, five years I've been bringing this up. We really need to get this thing addressed. I mean, it goes for HFD, when they come down too, they always in a bind. I mean, especially when school is done, because a lot of the cars that hitting in cannot hear these guys coming down. That's a big concern. We're gonna wait till somebody get hurt or get killed, and we're gonna, you know what I mean? We need to address that, and should be as soon as possible. Because that EMS, that red truck almost slamming through, and they were coming down the valley, so. That goes for Honolulu Fire Department too. They all falling in the same four parks, so we can get that fixed right away.
Okay, thank you. I apologize, HFD had to run out, but we will send their, send your concerns to them and follow up next month when they come through. Okay, we're gonna move on since HFD had to leave. So we'll move on to Honolulu Police Department. I see Corporal Pagan online. Corporal, if you can unmute yourself and go ahead and give your report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the community, Corporal Pagan, the Honolulu Police Department District Eight Community Peace Team. Do you have your stats for March? In March, we had thirty-two motor vehicle thefts, four in our area, twelve burglaries, none in our area, a hundred and thirteen deaths, eight in our area, thirty-seven unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, five in our area, total of three hundred sixty-three citations were issued, seven thousand thirty-seven calls for service, nine hundred seventy-four in our area. The only other thing that I have, as you may have heard on the news, that the city will be doing a cleanup of Debo's Beach Park to Uliapa. Unlike what the star advertiser said, it is not a homeless sweep. HPD in the city does not do sweeps. We do beach cleanups, and we do park enforcements. So we're gonna be issuing a notice to remove property on the twenty-fourth next week. We're gonna be doing a cleanup on the twenty-fifth, as well as the twenty-sixth, which is supposed to include moving of the sand, where we've had a lot of people that were digging large trenches, altering the terrain of the water and the ocean and the sand and stuff like that. So they're gonna be doing that, I believe, on the twenty-fifth and possibly the twenty-sixth. And I believe that Councilmember Tupola is organizing a community cleanup day on the Saturday of twenty-seventh, so they'll be out over there. That's all I have. I'm open for comments, questions, or concerns.
Okay, very good. Board Members, questions for HPD? None, none, public questions for HPD? Okay, wow. Really quick, Corporal, last month, our board unanimously supported a resolution that would use the fingerprinting process to process criminals at the YNI police station, but that was already initiated, and then the mayor had submitted his approval and saying that the YNI police station is now being used for fingerprinting, for processing. I know it's still early, but have you guys seen any kind of, you know, relief or anything to report back? If not, we can ask again next month, but just wanted to follow through on, follow up on that.
Thank you. I can go check up on that. I haven't heard anything different. The big thing about using the YNI station now with the live scan for the fingerprinting and stuff like that, is it'll probably be used if the person is going to be bailing out. We wouldn't take them all the way to Kapule if they're gonna be bailing out. But however, if they're not gonna bail out, then we would be still, we'd probably take them to Kapule, because eventually they'll be transported to town, and it just alleviates one, one more step from transporting and paperwork and stuff like that. So I can go and check, and I'll try to see if I can get some numbers of how many people are actually processed over there. But yes, it is up and running, and we do have staff that's trained to use it, so, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, that's it for Honolulu Police Department. Thank you so much. Please be safe out there. Thank you for all that you do. We are moving on now to residents' concerns. Community, if you have your concerns, please go ahead and line up to the microphone in person. Virtually, if you have community concerns, please raise your virtual hand, and I'll call on you after the community in person has been able to share. So go ahead, take it away.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Shansden Hipali. I just wanted to stop by tonight to introduce myself, as well as announce that the Nanakuli Night Markets will resume starting this Saturday and every third Saturday of each month until December two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you. Another thing is that I've had the pleasure of working with the community the past two years with Christmas on the Avenue. So this is a great opportunity for me to get involved further. Thanks to Auntie Carol. She is going to take some time to enjoy and relax, and I'm gonna go ahead and assist with running the market moving forward. And then my last thing is, the proceeds generated from the vendor fees that we collect, the net proceeds are donated to the Nanaikapono Hawaiian Civic Club Scholarship Fund, which awards graduating seniors of the high school with scholarships each year.
Very, very good. We're really excited. Congratulations, yes, and thank you, Carol, for being here for all the work that you had put into these night markets. Okay, very good. Please state your name for the minutes.
Kersi Vella. Hello, um, Neighborhood Board in Nanakuli. I'm a community member and very concerned with misinformation. I've been circling around the resident of Nanakuli, who are my family and my friends. First, I have not taken any position in the upcoming race for any senate district twenty-two. Onakaha, Ikuulina, Nanakuli, Makaha, Ma'ili, YNI, and Makua. Family members was misled putting up a banner on their property, because it was told that we was good. For the record again, I have not taken the public to support any candidate in the senate race for this area of Nanakuli. And we'll have the chance, and Nanakuli families will have a chance to make their own decisions when they should, and they do, to have the area represent. So this is what I ask the Nanakuli families and my family. Do you want somebody who has lived here in the district all their lives and familiar with the concerns of the community and issues? Or you want somebody who's transplant to represent you? First example, very big example, very, very concerning. For example, PVT has been a community issue for decades. Resident living here, surrounding area of the landfill, had an opportunity to receive a tax break, but the person who is new to the community did not have known about this longstanding struggle when they opposed Honolulu City Council Bill Thirty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, real property tax. The council was, introduced a member of the council on behalf of this community, Uncle George Parish.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Ed Warner.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. Your time is up.
And those living around the landfill.
If we can move on to the next community, please. Thank you so much for respecting the time. So thank you very much for respecting the time. I will call a recess if you don't end, but thank you very much for respecting the time. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Community to the microphone, thank you so much.
Aloha, just wanted to introduce myself. This is the first time I'm Neighborhood Board. My name is Blessing Star Dela Cruz. I'm Ko'awaipaaaina, the Kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands' diplomatic minister. I'm glad to be here and listening to all the concerns of the community and all the Neighborhood Boards.
Thank you very much. Next up, please state your name for the, for the minutes. Thank you.
All right. Aloha, Chair. My name is Daniel Dixon, off of Ayong Homestead Road. So I wanted to follow up on my mother's concern about the traffic signal on Ayong when Hiko shut it off. I did see the report on it, but it's not really an answer, and it's like, I don't know if that's gonna be, if they're still gonna send someone to like control traffic if it happens again, if they shut off any other signals. And then the other concern is about the Hawaii Emergency Management Siren System. So there's actually one that's right off of Princess Kahuna Avenue that's actually been like dead for a couple of years, actually. And, you know, they supposedly told me that they fixed it, but they actually didn't, which I actually sent you all those files about that. So I was hoping to get an answer from Hema about that.
Very good. Thank you very much. I have your information, Daniel. Next up, if you can state your name for the minutes, please.
Connie Victor. I have a question. This is for the representatives, anybody, the board. Watching the news, they have this bill, Twenty-seven Forty-three. It puts a surcharge fee or tax on anybody with a cesspool, and only one person voted against it, and it was Brenton Awah. So how is a tax going to stop global warming? This is what I, I mean, we stressing out here on the West Side, obviously, right? We gotta pay more bills. What is it that you guys want with this surcharge? And then last I checked, every sewage spill, like right now at Sandy's, is not from one owner, it's from the sewage system, because it's outdated. And why are you charging us for something that we never do? Can anybody on the board answer me, why you want tax going to be put on us for something that we never, we never do? How is it gonna stop global warming? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other community in the room. Oh, go ahead to the microphone, please. And then also online, if you do have a community concern, you can go ahead and raise your hand. We'll get to you right after the room. Thank you.
Hey, Ed again. Thank you for having me. Yeah, I was one of the big supporters of Bill Thirty-seven at the city council. You know, I live here all my life, sixty-plus years. Family came here from the nineteen thirties. I can say right now, I'm rooted, born and raised right here in Nanakuli. When I said born and raised, I was born three houses away from here, right across the border. That's how rooted I am. One of my concerns too is about hearing the mayor talk about the landfill, that he might be repealing Act Seventy-three. We worked hard for Act Seventy-three. You have no authority over that, the state. The state has no authority. You know, I, I ask, you know, we dealing with two landfills in this community, two. Nineteen eighty-seven, PVT, right? Why Manalo came up after? Now, we gotta sit here and deal with the Opa'la. Do you wanna see where we put them? Put them Hawaii Kai. Hey, put them in Koko Head. Who cares where they put them? We don't like it here, but there's another thing. If we get rid of Wa'Manalo, it leaves us one landfill, and that's PVT, right? All that shit gonna be coming and coming into Nanakuli? I doubt it. But you know what? Well, people think it's coming, but it won't, you know? Block that road before it even come here. Well, another big concern I have with Hawaiian homes, why don't Hawaiian homes have the city maintain our valley? Because apparently it seem like they're not doing a damn good job about it. You go up in that valley, dry season is coming, you watch. The warning that Lahaina gave the world, it ain't no difference up here. Papa, I catch fire, or kupuna, or grandma, or...
Sorry, your time is up. We're gonna go ahead and run.
I've been addressing it for the past five years.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Online, any community concerns online? If not, we're gonna go ahead to, oh, another community concern in person. Go ahead, state your name for the minutes, please.
My name is Sabrina Grace, and I'm gonna continue reading where Vella left off. Bill Thirty-nine would have gave the Nanakuli people an exemption in taxes, wouldn't have not paid any property taxes. She opposed the bill, okay? We deserve that. In closing, I want you to be, not be misled, and I'm here to correct the misinformation being spread by Samantha Decort about me. And I'm here to avoid division in my family and my friends, board members and families. I leave you with this. Not everything that glitters turns to gold. Samantha, you gotta be transparent and let all our community know what she went vote, what she went oppose us on.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and go online. Jeffrey has, okay. One second, online, we're gonna get to you in a second. Thank you.
Just, just, am I good? Just a reminder for those that are online in the room, just for the purposes of the meeting, this is not a place, this is a public meeting, this is not a place where we can attack or go after somebody's character. So please, let's keep this meeting orderly. The comments that are made are not meant to attack any members of the board or members of the community, or members online, political officials, first responders alike. So please, let's keep this meeting in a respectful manner, as regarding the rules of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to online. We have Bridget Napier. If you can unmute yourself and state your community concern. You're still muted. Still muted. Can you click on the microphone? Jeffrey did send you a request to unmute. Ah, okay, we're not hearing you. If not, we'll try throughout the meeting. If not, you can go ahead and type your community concern into the chat, and we'll, and we'll get to you. But let's try to fix that, because I know that you're intending on part of the presentation part, so. All righty, very good. Okay, let's see, no other community concerns online. Okay, very good. So we'll go ahead and move on to presentations. All right, very good. Well, first up, we have Department of Agriculture Deputy Director Dexter Kishida. If he is with us online. Oh, there he is. Yeah, Dexter, if you could unmute yourself.
Hi. Sorry, on my way to the West Side still yet, but I am here. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. We can hear you.
Great. Hi, thanks. Thank you for inviting me to the Neighborhood Board meeting, Chair. Dexter with the Hawaii Department of Agriculture, Deputy to the Chair. Did want to share a few things. I know one of the huge concerns that we've been dealing with are invasive species, and this is across the state. But in West Oahu, one of the, the primary issues we have right now is coconut rhinoceros beetle. We're seeing severe damage as you enter on tracks, kaheh power plant, et cetera. And the department has been working with both, and, let me take a step back with the invasive species part. For coconut rhinoceros beetle, one of the issues we have is treatments for the beetle are pretty limited, and limited to pesticides. There's some preventative measures that can be implemented, like netting, but for fully grown trees, it's pretty difficult as adjustment, regular adjustment needs to happen, et cetera. But we've been working with the city and county, Parks and Rec folks, to work on treatment plans for all of the land that Parks and, or the city has, the Parks and Rec. We've also recently engaged with Hiko to be able to work and treat their trees. One of the issues that we have with the current treatment options is the need to deflower and defruit the coconut. And so when it comes to farming and keeping coconut for us to eat, it becomes a real challenge. And so we're working with UH and other partners to work on other control mechanisms. I saw recently in a, in a comment back to an article, I think it was, you know, just the severity. Control or some other mechanism to control this beetle. The challenge with the bio, that's using another, another thing to help control this is...
Sorry, Dexter, I apologize. I apologize. I believe the topic was the crimes on ag land?
Sure, sure. So in short, yeah, that. But for egg, egg crimes, definitely a few hearings, apologies. On egg crimes, one, definitely Makaha and a few others. We've, we're really, really blessed to have the Department of Law Enforcement now online, and with some great, both manpower but technical solutions, to be able to combat. Since, uh, we've had a few more reports, and I'll let DLE or even HPD be able to expound in the future. One of the things we're working on this year, though, is the prosecution of these cases. That when we, when I learned, and I'm pretty new to the Department, Department of Agriculture, that in the history, or its recent history, many of these cases don't move forward to prosecution. The Chair and I agree that this is something that, that we need to ensure, both working with law enforcement, farmers, ranchers, and others, that we can collect the data necessary and move forward and ensure that we can get prosecution on, on any of these perpetrators. So you'll see over this next year, additional task force, or additional task force or working group to, to get all the necessary stakeholders at the table to, to make this happen.
Okay, it was, it was a little hard to hear you, so Dexter, if you don't mind, we're gonna just go ahead and open it up for community questions.
I'll be there in like twenty minutes, probably.
Oh, you're twenty minutes away, okay. Should we move it, yeah, and then come back? Okay, okay. Hold, hold that thought. He's on his way here. Yeah, he's on his way here, so, so sorry, yes. I apologize, there was a delay in him getting here, but the, yes, thank you so much. Okay, Dexter, what we're gonna do is we're going to move on to the next presentation. Do I need a motion to move that? Oh, okay, great, okay. If you don't mind, we'll go ahead and move over to the Department of Law Enforcement, yeah. Okay, perfect, all right. So until he gets here in person, thank you so much, community members and those online, for your patience. We're gonna go ahead and move on to Department of Law Enforcement. And so we have with us Deputy Director Jared Redula. Thank you so much for being with us in person. If you can go ahead and share with the community just some things that you've been working on out here on the coast, and what your agency has in preparation to help us down here on... um and what your agency has uh in preparation to help us down here on the side.
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Jared Redula. I'm the Deputy Director for the new State Department of Law Enforcement. Um, I wanna I wanted to uh just kinda explain what the Department of Law Enforcement is. We came into existence on January first of this year. And essentially, what the legislature did was pass a law back in twenty twenty-two that conglomerated uh most of the big state law enforcement agencies, including the Sheriff's Division, the Narcotics Enforcement Division, um, about half of the criminal investigators with the Attorney General's Office um and our Department of Transportation Harbor Police. So they took all of those agencies and conglomerated them into one, now the new Department of Law Enforcement. Um, additionally, the legislature also conglomerated the Office of Homeland Security that was with the State Department of Defense. This morning, uh, rather this evening, I'm here to talk a little bit about our role in trying to confront the problem of agriculture crime. Because we're a new agency, I wanna be very clear um what our purpose is. We are not here to replace the police department. The traditional law enforcement on this island has always been the Honolulu Police Department. Rather, um, we're here to be able to do our part in enforcing the laws in the community. But we don't replace the police department. Um, some of the things that make us uh different from the police department is that we don't really have a rural presence. Our department outside of the courthouses don't have a patrol presence uh on on the the Leward Coast or outside most of uh metropolitan downtown Honolulu. What we do have is a team of very, very experienced criminal investigators, detectives that are able to specifically look at different crime problems in the community like agriculture crime. And with that, we also have equally very community committed law enforcement officers. So um, I came here tonight to really talk to the community about what are the some of the things that we can do to confront the problem of agriculture crime right now. And the first thing is, please provide law enforcement with information. So agriculture crime, theft of agriculture products, um, illegal sales on the black market of agriculture products, trespassing, theft of livestock. These are crimes that normally don't get a lot of law enforcement attention. So as such, we don't know a lot about who is doing these crimes, why they're doing these crimes. Okay, so uh, we need to know who, what, when, where, why and how these crimes are occurring. We need you to report that to our department. In a little while, our department is going to launch an app. With that app is gonna be a way for the community, especially those involved in agriculture, to be able to report those crimes to us and to give a process on how to give us information so that we can take that information and have a starting point to be able to start solving these crimes. The second thing that we're gonna do is ask the community right now, if you're in agriculture, if you're a farmer or a rancher, please take a look around your properties, inspect your fencing and make sure that signage is up. The no trespassing signs uh are really, really important. And there are rules or regulations on how how much intervals can be between signs or how the distance between no trespassing signs. We've gotta be able to give prosecutors a way of being able to prosecute these um types of cases. And and the last thing that I'm gonna ask the community to do is that our department is very interested in leveraging technology. The state legislature has given us some funding to be able to to um buy things like license plate readers and to integrate camera systems. So especially those uh farmers or ranchers and and properties, agriculture properties that have security cam cameras, for example, we're going to ask you to allow us to integrate your feed so that if a crime occurs, law enforcement can go back in the security video feeds and be able to find a starting place. What we need is a starting place. Okay, um, law enforcement cannot be everywhere all the time. Okay, we have very limited resources and as I've explained earlier, we don't have a patrol presence. My department at least does not have a patrol presence in rural areas. And so as a result, in order for my detectives to bite into this problem, we need a starting place. Okay, so we're gonna ask you to allow us to leverage our technology and to really report those things to us. And thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight.
Okay, very good. Um, uh, first, I'm gonna go to a board member questions, then I'll open it up for the community. Uh, go ahead, uh, Board Member Corona. And then, oh, oh, okay, go ahead, Board Member Corona.
Thanks for coming out today, I appreciate it. Um, just a, just a couple of questions. Um, Department of Law Enforcement, it's a brand new created department. Um, so I I assume that the 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 state legislate legislatures have fully funded you with the department itself as a full, but so you're submitting budgets for new fiscal years and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, just to keep your 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 department afloat, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then um you had made a comment that uh that obviously HPD is our our primary source for reporting any issues we see. So um, so do we, i- if, as a citizen, do I contact HPD like I normally would and then follow up with the department, with your department? And if so, do you have a contact or something that we can put out right now? A phone number or a number that that the community can call as necessary?
Yeah, right now you can contact the Department of Law Enforcement at uh eight zero eight five eight seven one two. I'm sorry, one three five five.
Okay, and that's all I had, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, very good, Board Member Augustine.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you for that presentation and introducing the new Department of Law Enforcement. So uh, in the reporting process that you folks have in place, are you gonna be, how is that used in the court of law? And is it gonna be anonymous? Or how do we ensure the safety of those individuals who are gonna be doing the reporting in assistance to your investigations?
Yeah, most definitely, uh, uh, our app or if you call us, uh, those who report crimes um clearly have the opportunity to remain anonymous. Um, and we will respect uh those who report to us their anonymity. That said, we also want to encourage you, um, when possible and when you're comfortable, to please identify yourself. Because oftentimes, um, we may need to come and speak with you again. We'll we'll try to investigate. Sometimes we don't have enough information and a lot of times, actually, there's a need to try to contact the complainant again. So, um, but we will respect the public's anonymity.
Okay, very good, thank you, Board Member Ayol.
I don't know if it's a question, but um due to the last shooting in Makua, Mr. Cranston Doopia, it's a crime. It's a crime of agriculture because there's poachers. Yep. So I I would think uh your office or your organization, the State Department, the state, right? And HPD would get together and figure out, hopefully figure it out because one dead rancher may lead to another dead rancher. But we need to, law enforcement, I'm just talking about law enforcement, your organization as well as HPD, team up together so that you guys can come up with solutions other than putting up a no trespassing sign. Because the sign doesn't mean anything other than it's a sign to tell you, get off my property. But when people come with guns, now that's something else. And I feel real sorry because I went to the gentleman's funeral. Thousands of people came with this one man that was protecting his ranch. It's a shame that now we lose one rancher. I don't know how many cattle he lost, but I just wanted to bring that up because I was feeling it at the funeral. And to bring this up now in this community forum where everybody should listen to this or listen to you, actually, and to the chief of the Honolulu Police Department and make sure that those people that do these type of crimes, as you say, agriculture crime, because it is, it's an agricultural crime. But Big Man said that we will do something about it and we should, not as a board, but as a law enforcement agency. That was it.
Thank you, Board Member Ayol. Uh, we will move on to, oh, go ahead, Board Member Augustine.
Thank you, I have one more question. So in the line of reporting and uh the process of how you operate under the state, can you explain how your department works in collaboration with the court systems and then with the police department? So are you an intermediary between the two? Or are you reporting directly to the police for them to then take things to the next phase? Can you kind of explain your process?
No, so um, much like the police department, we are an independent law enforcement agency of the state of Hawaii. We are connected with the Department of the Attorney General. The state's attorneys are are prosecuting our criminal cases for us. Uh, right now I have about three hundred and fifty law enforcement officers uh that work in our department and uh we are taking our cases to the Attorney General for prosecution.
Okay, very good. Uh, we have board member question online, so I'm gonna go ahead and take our board member first and then I'll go to community. Uh, Board Member Myers, if you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Mahalo, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, you're good, thank you.
Oh, wonderful. Mahalo, aloha, my name is Derayne Myers. I'm a neighborhood board member. Uh, mahalo for your presentation. Uh, the question that comes to my mind is when you're talking about enforcement on agriculture. And of course, earlier I heard community members being very concerned about landfills in our community. Um, last year, at the beginning of last year, I think it was beginning of last year, there was a report of illegal tire dumping in an agriculture land in on off of Hakemo Road. Um, what is the penalty for something like that? And when and how does, is your department the one that handles like illegal dumping in an agriculture, illegal game movement in agriculture land, illegal, you know, chicken fight in agriculture land? Is that your, is that gonna be your department and is that gonna be your enforcement? Mahalo.
Thank you for the question. Uh, that's a interesting question. So traditionally, law enforcement situations are situations where the public needs the police, you contact nine one one and get the Honolulu Police Department. And that's still the case. Um, this, our state Department of Law Enforcement is more specialized uh because the vast majority of my three hundred and fifty law enforcement officers are state sheriffs. We're generally centered in downtown and amongst the judiciary. Um, that said, um, I have a crack team of detectives who can target hotspots. Um, for example, areas where there there is a lot of dumping to see if we can't stake it out and catch somebody. Our our role is really to help supplement the police department and to aid our community in targeting some of the hotspots where things are happening. Now, we brought, we got brought into the discussion of agriculture crime only a few weeks ago after the tragedy um at at the ranch with the rancher um earlier this year. Um, and we felt galvanized to want to start addressing this. And this is why we've been working very closely with our Department of Agriculture um and to be able to um try to bring some law enforcement efforts to look at this. Because as I said, really up until now, this has been a situation, an intolerable situation in the community, but one that that doesn't really get a whole lot of attention. Um, and so we wanted to put law enforcement effort um behind trying to confront this problem.
Okay, very good. Uh, okay, uh, we'll go ahead and open up to community in person and then we'll get to community online. So please line up to the microphone uh to state your statement or a question for Department of Law Enforcement. Please state your name for the minutes.
Aloha. Kalaiso Sosero. Yeah. You said to bring it up to the attention of law enforcement? I doubt from two thousand one. Okay? Peaches being taken, being shared with Do Care, Do Fa, hunters. His life was not supposed to be taken. If the action of our law enforcement that us taxpayers are paying, he would have been alive to this day. If fell through the cracks, I have the Paula Paula from Jason Medulla. Okay, I assure you, Mrs. Sosero, it's not gonna fall upon deaf ears of blind eyes. Well, let me tell you, it did, sir. And you talking about confidence? It's our taxpayer monies, huh? Three hundred fifty, where's our share along our coast? Where's our share? Why is it only downtown downtown? We have the most beautiful prime lands here. The most, seventy percent of the island is Do Care, Do Fa. They do not give a damn care. I am very upset and disappointed in how our law enforcement call nine one one. We call nine one one, okay, we're gonna get it home. My goats was mauled. Okay, animals, you folks know, we had your folks. Do Care Officer, mind you, on my private property. He see the hunters up there? He see the gun shooting? Videotapes of unethical hunters which you guys cannot control. If you cannot control, fold your department and take it to the federal. We want action, we don't want wahah. And more lives being taken. You don't know how my body is shaking right now because I'm so disgusted in hearing, we're doing our job. You can't do the job to get the hell out of office. Because that child was supposed to be alive. You folks own majority of the state land there. Okay? I'm sorry, but you get the ranchers, get the fence cut, the waterline cut and encampments across on state land.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to the next question. Thank you so much, thank you.
Get the job done. We, they were for us, remember that.
Thank you.
Seventy percent, give me back my taxes.
Thank you. Go ahead, state your name for the minutes, please.
Aloha, my name is Austin Sosero. In transparent what my wife Gina Colley Sosero had said, we have documentation stating way back, our District Forty-five representative knew about this over a year ago, over. DLNR Do Care, Do Fa knew all about this. We have the black and white evidence. If you provide anybody with any questions, your three hundred fifty law enforcements right now, exactly, exactly what type of crime will these people be affected by if they get caught on agricultural land? And affecting the agricultural uh livestock or stealing equipment? What type of felony? Is that a felony or is that a misdemeanor? That's a question before I go further on.
So it depends on the circumstance and fact specific. So it could be a felony, it could be a C felony. Um, and depending on what is taken, it could also be a misdemeanor. It just sort of depends specifically on the event and what what occurred in the event. So theft of livestock is generally a felony, um, but um theft of certain other things might fall into misdemeanor misdemeanor category depending on value.
Um, the reason for it, okay. We we had, we had livestock being killed by feral dogs or rogue dogs, I should say, because of poaching. They leaving their dogs behind. From Lyman's Ranch up here, they had dogs attacking their horses, they killed. Okay, the the dogs has an owner all the way to Peacock Flats, kind of point, there's rogue dogs that's happening because of unethical hunters, poachers. They leaving their dogs behind. What can be done to eliminate these problems?
Okay, go ahead, you can answer and then we'll move on to the next uh community. So go ahead, you can answer.
So I wanna, I wanna be clear that illegal hunting is DLNR enforcement, which is not my department. So I, we've been in existence only four months. Um, the Department of Law Enforcement only came into existence on January first. That said, what can occur is if people are trespassing, if people are doing unethical things on state lands, now if those activities are crimes, it needs to be confronted and law enforcement needs to take action. I agree. This is why I'm here, to tell this community that even with our limited resources, as law enforcement, as a law enforcement agency, we are willing to come out and do our part.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Yeah, no, 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 we're gonna move on, but, but if you wanna, no, 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 we're gonna move on to the next one. But if you do wanna answer another question, you can go, stand back and like, I just wanna let you guys know that I am gonna be like super firm on the two minutes, okay? Because we have a lot of, I know this is a very sensitive issue, so we wanna make sure that we give everybody in here time and then also those that are online as well. So when the timer goes off, I'm gonna end it, okay? So go ahead, state your name for the minutes, please.
Listen, Star Dela Cruz, I just kinda wanted to ask you this. Isn't the guideline for specifically agriculture crimes and everything, that's touch bases in federal law? I mean, how does the state go in towards, and having you guys being in force with HPD, when the HPD is to serve the community in the crime district part? I'm not getting it, because I'm understanding the federal and international. So I'm trying to reach out to you right now and ask, if you're confusing me, community is more confused. And you guys need to clarify, because when it comes to the federal charges in, in persons when someone is murdered, there's also such basis with the federal and international laws. Where do you guys stand when it comes to that? Because then you're all wasting our money here, the taxation in the community. And of course, your effort is duly noted, I understand that and you guys are in the process, but I'm flagging you on that, in that understanding. So if you can talk with me afterwards, if you have time, so I can clarify in my head what exactly, so I can move forward into the federal part to understand where you're standing on the state and the sitting county for the community. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you, okay? Go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Aloha, Kalaisi again. I have a solution. You folks work with DLNR, okay? Zone hunting, Zone G, District Three. I have a solution for now, I tell you, all these departments, the law enforcement, DLNR, Do Care, Do Fa, I don't care what you call your name, yourself. Close that hunting zone down, I tell you, it can be fomented, because we ain't got nobody, we have zero. Okay? You're compromising the safety and well-being of public, not only our community, we talking about tourism out there, okay? We face this every day. So I'd like to see you guys happy feet, huh? Have you ever heard of the penguin, happy feet? Have you happy feet go down there and face and see what we go to? You know, we're not penguins, we residents here. Our life depends on what we have available. It's been stripped it because why? Our law enforcement is adding and abetting. Adding and abetting, they know the problem, they letting it fall to the cracks. No more cracks, patch the cracks. I wanna see what you can do, I want the talking. I don't want just a balla, I want action. We want action, we deserve action. Protect our community, don't stay there looking pretty on AC. Go there and see what we face up against. Because you ever heard of yellow soul? Okay? These have gone to the state capital. You gonna look at ranches, we take matters in our own hands, and whose fault is it? You're pointing fingers at the ranchers, point finger at yourself, because you folks doing nothing.
Okay, very good, we'll go ahead and move on, please state your name for the records for the minutes.
I need Victor to get two questions, like, is there a degree of the type of cases where you guys will not pursue or, or will? And the second thing is, when you guys see you have no enforcement, it's like having one dog without teeth. On this side, like, yeah, fifteen minute phone call and one, another fifteen minute drive away. You're not, but what happened? Somebody gonna die, nobody gonna be there. Somebody won't get, nobody gonna be there. So why don't we choose the laws for protect our family and our homes from our doorstep to the ends of our property? Defend ourselves, because law enforcement cannot protect, they only gonna come and do a police report saying that we died. It's all we get. So why not like start deputizing community manager and training them instead?
Okay, thank you very much, okay? Please state your name for the minutes and then right after this, we're gonna go online to questions.
Austin Salsido, okay. Just to emphasize, just to put this in your ear, February twenty ninth, we were at the state legislature with Senator Gabbert Tim Richards. He was looking for a solution. The solution is actually having the bodies in enforcement, having all the enforcers bring it to the west side, not to windward side. We lack the enforcement, we had Do Care enforcers quitting, because they never had financially stepped increase in pay. I have his resignation, he quit and he was assigned to our area. We have a supervisor on the west side right now, he's on suspension, and he's a senior, well, dedicated to the job. I don't know what the hell happened, and he's a senior and yet he's suspended. He seen the chaos over there. The solution is, we need a drone program, because we had, when my wife's four goats died, enforcers took about, way over an hour, because they was on the windward side. Three vehicles came down, both in the dude was stood below the mountain and look up. No drones whatsoever, because the killing was on private land. They was looking, they only looked up to the DLNR mountains in back of my property. They couldn't do, they couldn't even go up there, they never been tempted. I had HPD on the property, because that's their jurisdiction. But what was known in February twenty ninth, because of Hunting Zone G, DLNR is still liable for all those strays that's around there that's coming in from the Hunting Zone G. That's the fact, that came from Senator Decoy. So keep that in mind, we need the enforcements and you folks don't even have it. So if you folks gonna do the job, talk to, talk to the agricultural landowners, because we are suffering. My sons cannot take more livestock, because it's being hindered with all this poachers and rogue dogs. They're not feral, they're rogue, they're left behind by poachers.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. Thank you, very good, okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on to online. I believe Bridget had her hand up first, so I'll go ahead and call on her if you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, great.
Awesome. My name is Bridget Napier, I'm Oahu Cataman's president. I represent several cataman that are within the Wainai area as well as everywhere else on the island. The couple of questions that they did have is, one, you have three hundred and fifty officers that you stated within your department currently, do they work on standard Monday through Friday shift or are they on call? Or do you have staggered shifts where you have availability during the weekend hours?
Did, did you hear the question? So there's.
I think I got part of the question.
Okay. Bridget, do you wanna repeat your question? And then I'm gonna ask if there's any noise in the room, if you could just keep your voices down so people online don't have to repeat themselves. So go ahead, online, hold on one second. If people in the room could just quiet down, please? We're having a hard time hearing the question online, so I apologize, Bridget, if you can go ahead and repeat your question again.
Your three hundred and fifty officers that you currently have employed, are they working a typical Monday through Friday shift, eight to five? Or do you have them staggered to where they are able to work over the weekends and into evening hour shifts?
Okay, yeah, so again, the Department of Law Enforcement is not the traditional law enforcement agency, twenty-four hours a day, in most respects. Our patrol units are generally centered in downtown Honolulu, because they are required to service the government buildings and facilities and the judiciary, which is centered there. So generally speaking, those, a large amount of our officers are Monday to Friday officers, because of the type of service we have to provide. We do however have twenty-four hour watches. But again, this was not, confronting agriculture crime was not one of the primary focuses in building our department. But because of what has occurred with the death of the rancher, we wanted to do our part to start looking at this problem.
Yeah, there's been a lot of issues in relation to that, and it's, it's a wide range. It's not just Wainai, it's everywhere. And I think ranchers get scared in majority of the situations, because if we shoot someone, or we hurt their dog, or we hurt their property, when we're not around, they're gonna come back and hurt our property, whether that's our livestock, our equipment. A water truck was just recently, a massive water truck was recently stolen from the North Shore and driven to the Wainai coast and parked. When the rancher went there, they had to make deals with whomever stole it and nothing was done with whoever did take it. They didn't wanna release who it was, but they knew who stole it. What can we do as a ranching community to make sure that our problems get resolved and we don't have to take it into our own hands? So stuff like what happened to Cranston doesn't happen to somebody else. I have no problem walking up with somebody who comes onto our ranch land and defending ourselves, but in the end, we're still gonna get arrested and we're still gonna get tried as if we're the criminal in the situation until proven otherwise.
Yeah, so, but one of the most important ideas that I hope to put out there is that in order for us to reduce the problem of agriculture crime and start making this whole thing go away, is that there has to be enforcement. Traditionally, farmers and ranchers in the agriculture community have had very little enforcement. So we were willing to take our law enforcement resources and to begin looking at this problem. But again, the first thing that we need is information. From, with information, we can plan to use our resources to begin enforcement. And with enforcement comes deterrence, with enforcement comes attention to this problem, visibility to this problem, and hopefully then people stop doing the crime. But there has to be a penalty. So I'm willing to look at, get it, get my, get dirty confronting this problem so that there begins to be consequences. When people get consequences, they'll change their behavior, hopefully. You know, and if not, then go to jail.
Chair. Okay, very good, hold on one second, okay. Thank you very much, Bridget. Do you wanna make a comment?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that you come and give us a quarterly report. Since we have a lot of agricultural land in our district, would you be able to come on a quarterly basis and give us a report of what you're doing or the things that you're following up with in our community? So that's my motion, is to have a quarterly report by this new department.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for Department of Law Enforcement to give a quarterly report here at the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board. Do I have a second? Yep, okay, very good, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, very good, we'll go ahead and take a voice vote. I know I have two board members online, okay, they logged off. Okay, very good, okay, we'll just go ahead and take a voice vote. So the motion is to have DLE come quarterly to give us an update three months from now and then every three months, okay? Very good. Sure, sure, very good. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a voice vote and.
So that will be, will that become a standing agenda item then? So that will be always on the agenda regardless if they come or not? I mean, it's requested that they come once a quarter, I understand that. So that becomes a new modification to the agenda, that becomes a standard agenda item from now on added?
Actually, you know what, I apologize, we were supposed to go into discussions, so my bad, discussion and.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, I, I don't disagree with the motion, I support it. I just wanna make sure that if, if that's what is, and that becomes a standing addition to the agenda, that agenda gets modified to have that in there at least once every three months or.
Yeah, very good, well, I'll propose that if anything, it will be a part of the officials' monthly reports and not necessarily a presentation, because that would really take up a lot of time and we wouldn't be able to get to board business. So, so I'll go ahead and propose that, that's something that we agree with.
So add it to the, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have, to the, yeah, to the monthly reports, officials' monthly reports.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and take a voice vote. So the motion on the floor is to have DLE come back in three months, give us a monthly report and an update, and this will be fall under Agenda Item Number Five, Officials' Monthly Reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. We will go ahead and stay in touch with DLE to get that information. And then also, sorry, that was, that was happening right in the middle of community questions. So we have Po'okele that has had his hand up. So Po'okele, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself and asking your question to DLE? Okay, oh, there you are. Oh, I think your hand is down now, so maybe you didn't have a question. Oh, okay, 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 hand is down. That's, oh. Oh, I apologize, Board Member Coroni, you had a question.
Yeah, yeah, just, just, I, I just wanna make a couple of comments. When Mr. and Mrs. Salsido typically come in and brief things, usually have a lot of good factual information. I always make sure I pay attention, because they do a lot of research. So and then I like, I like to be like that too, when I have specific topics that are critical to the community, try to do some research and understanding and they have a lot of history. So it's, and wealth of information, so if, if there's a partnership that can be made there, then I really think it's necessary. But, and just, I'm segueing, segue, segueing into something here is, this is not a mission, an official mission statement of your organization, correct? This is, this is a, this is, this is outside the scope of your mission statement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that.
Up till now.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm, and that's, so officially, in the mission statement, the DLE's mission statement does not have a partnership with the Department of Agriculture as it stands right now, moving forward?
Prior to the discussion of agriculture crimes, no.
Okay, so and then that's, so that's why I, I get a little concerned, I understand a lot of the community concerns with this is because I look at it like a news story, you know? The news is hot on this, on a topic, a few months down the road, it kinda dwindles away, then you don't hear about it again, until something else major happens. And I get concerned when it's not in the mission statement, there's no funding behind it, because now you have to create additional funding requirements and your budget requirements to support, to support the program as it moves forward. So, so basically what I'm getting to, if, would, would there, would there ever be a gap or a priority shift? Since it's not a part of the mission right now, unless it gets incorporated as part of the mission, then there potentially becomes a higher priority, or where the state Attorney General says, "Hey, you guys need to focus on something else, I want you to put all your resources here, we'll get back to that later." And until it's budgeted, a mission statement, a tasking behind it, I, I get, that's my concern with it. So can you give a little more confidence in where I'm going with this?
Yeah, so, so because of the recent death, there's been a lot of discussion at the legislature to want government officials to look at the issue of agriculture crime. So with that, I think that we can build cooperation at the legislature. Right now, we are in active discussions with the State Department of Agriculture. We did this on our own, to be able to look at what can we do right now? Even outside of appropriations and budgets, and outside of our mission with limited law enforcement resources, what can we do? We've only been in existence for four months, we have quite a big responsibility already, and yet, we still want to do our part. But I wanna be clear, we're not here to replace HPD. But because of the need to look at agriculture crimes and to start building enforcement so that people in the community understand there are consequences for this. We're, we're willing to um to put our best foot forward, our resources forward, our staffing forward and to begin to look at this.
I appreciate it and I understand that the, I understand uh the the organization itself is is brand new. You're working, you're working out the quirks and moving your way forward. I just worry about the, the, the non-mission requirement of the DLE to do this. But you're trying to, but I just worry about the higher priority might come along and this might just get pushed to the side for a little while, but get pushed and so that's just my concern. So I think it's great that we had this quarterly update that's gonna allow us to continue to engage and kind of see where you are within your budgeting, your mission, your manpower support, et cetera. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then I'm gonna take the last question again uh with Bridget NePierre. So if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, uh, and this will be the last question for DLE.
Um, just wanted to state, as you know, obviously you can't get as much support for your department until you start getting community support and or reports coming in of things happening. I know recently with my sister them out at Ohike Lolo, when they call for trespassers, HPD many times won't wanna handle the calls because there's more paperwork involved. And they just basically show up, have them escorted out and they won't help complete any documentation to have somebody trespassing. And you have there, they've had this guy walk around with a machete who's a homeless person that lives on the property. They've had um poachers, which obviously the Cranston situation that occurred. Um, they've had signage put up every ten feet, I think it is. As soon as they get to the other end of the ranch, they walk back to the front, all the signs have been removed. Um, what kind of support can the community, ranching community or any community for that matter, provide your department to ensure that ag crimes get a permanent placeholder? I mean, agriculture is everywhere. We gotta figure out a way to get a permanent placeholder for some kind of enforcement. If HPD isn't that, it's turning into a purity Yellowstone. It's a joke, but it's not at the same time.
Thanks for the question. So I think our message is we need a place to start and that's what the community can give us. With your tips, whether it's anonymous, whether you phone call to the office, it has to start somewhere. Um, we have to know where these trouble spots are so that I can um gain information and then from there, plan enforcement efforts to try to address it. But without a starting point, um the island is huge and the problem is big. I need a place to start.
And you can go both um private and state land.
In most cases.
Okay, uh, very good. Uh, Jared, I have your number. We will go ahead and follow up with you with the concerns. Uh, I really wanna thank you very much for coming, being here in person. We appreciate it. Uh, we are looking forward to uh working together with you uh and the agency down here to do what we can with these crimes that are happening. Um, and we're a very involved community, so we look forward to holding you accountable. All right, very good. Thank you so much, Jared. Uh, thank you, community, those online. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to uh Department of Agriculture. We have Deputy Director Dexter Kishida with us. Uh, Deputy Director, um Dexter Kishida. Yep, so if you can go ahead and uh introduce yourself and share with the community.
Apologies earlier, um, running late from town. Thank you very much for having me here. Dexter Kishida, Deputy Director at the Department of Agriculture. One of the, the attendees had a really good idea. I mean, partly to flesh this out further, um, we'll work with the area legislators to hold a town hall specifically on this topic to, to really dig a little bit deeper. But the second piece to it all is really moving it, right? So there's the enforcement piece where we work with partners at HPD and DLE. And I I do wanna defend Department of Law and they're a brand new department and they jumped in with, with zero additional funding and, and to, to make this work and to help us out. The other piece is, and and I'm not to make an excuse, pretty new to this role. When I found out that there's been almost zero prosecutions on this, on ag crimes, that's even more worrisome because then that's the, that's what makes people stop doing it, right? So now's the time with great partners like DLE, HPD, and now the Attorney General's Office, where we'll actually be moving things to prosecution. Um, and and I feel that's really the linchpin that needs to happen. But I'm here for any questions.
Okay, very good. Uh, board members, questions for Dexter? Questions for the, go ahead, board member Corona.
So you, do you, do you partnership with DLNR?
Uh, we're, we're, we're another state entity. Um, they don't enforce anything on our lands, but we, we do, we do.
Okay, so I, the reason why I'm asking that is because I, I, I look at, at both ways, right? So if, if the community is being asked to partner with DLE, HPD, uh, other community members, um, even asking to put, you know, uh, um, video feeds on their property that link back to DLE. We're, we're, we're trying to do our part, but I look at DLNR and DLNR's gotta get involved too. So if, if there's an agricultural thing and Department of Land and Natural Resources is
Needs to be at the table as well.
Part of that as well. So this discussion right here should also have probably a DLNR representative as well, so.
At the town hall, let's, I'll, I'll make sure that we have that complete picture. That's a, that's a really good point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, board members, any other questions? Board member IO?
Mine has to do with the rhinoceros beetle, which, which is what you was talking about.
Fair, can we take that now or should I take that offline later? Can we, can we?
Oh, no, please go ahead. Yeah, please go ahead. I apologize.
I've, I've encased or I, I've come across the beetle through a miracle grow. The bag that we sell at Home Depot. I sent the picture on, I sent the beetles on. Uh, I took pictures of it and sent it to your office. Someone answered. And I'm not sure what you guys doing with the, the stuff that's coming in from the mainland. But almost, all of these beetles are actually in the bag. So whoever uses the bag to fertilize your stuff on your property, you're actually putting the beetle on your property.
The, the issue, the issue with this is it's not coming in with the beetle. The beetle is getting into the bag not since it's been on Oahu. And then at the distribution point, whatever store you're buying at, and then there's distribution with it. Um, so that's, that's our, that is the challenge.
Okay, very good. Board member Corona?
I just wanna segue again on what Paul was talking about, board member IO was talking about, about the we had a, we had a presentation was about last year, was it last year? Um, from a contractor, I, I, I'm calling them contractors because they're funded by the state to uh uh provide education and such on their, on the rhinoceros beetle. And they were specifically told us that they are here for only their, their, their job, their, their contracted job is for containment at the harbor. In the outline communities, it's only education, but so that, that's, 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 that to me is, is an issue since it's spread so much further out that it's no longer containment at the harbor, it's spread island wide and a lot in this area.
So that organization was funded or is funded by the feds and the fed's view is don't let it leave the island, right? Because that's like the inspectors at the airport, don't let it leave the island. Um, last year, the ledge did give us money to do actual actions on it. So buying things, so we're, we're using the money to buy things like the, the chemicals and the treatment options to get it out there. You'll also see some other community action projects that are getting funded to, to combat CRB. Both on the green waste end, because that's the best way to control in, in ensuring that the green waste is gonna be clean. Kind of like the mulch bag that, that was mentioned, but also on the heavily infested areas. Thank you.
Okay, very, very good. Board members, any other questions? If not, we're gonna go to community in the room. Community, if you have questions for Department of Ag, please go to the microphone, state your name for the minutes and we are on two minutes.
So your ag. You work, you work with HPD?
Uh, we work with all the entities.
Also with the law enforcement? If you both work with HPD law enforcement, then you answer, why did this incident happen? We got so much departments, but zero action. Have you ever thought as an ag person to do an MOA? The hunters that has the license? Because I don't see a lot of law enforcement that's physical fit. I don't see too much ag that's physical fit to climb out. Oh, okay. So can you guys do an MOA? Because who knows better? The license, a legit honest hunters that's out there. Okay, and as for ag, you know there's Noah hunting dogs allowed? Zero. That was complaints been going on. Okay, we've been informed that who care knows about those hunting dogs. They allow those hunting dogs to be there to control the paragaults. Well, let me tell you. They're there for control of paragaults. Who's gonna control the unethical hunters we face every day? I would like to hear the answers for that. So do an MOA. If you guys cannot control nothing, you got hunters, they know the rules, you get unethical hunters. You folks gotta learn to deal with that. You have too many departments, too many chiefs, not enough Indians willing to do the work. If I find a good Indians, do an MOA. We want solution. We don't want excuses. And you're lucky I'm calming down.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, go ahead. Please state your name for the minutes.
Okay, Austin Salsedo. Uh, just carry on one more if I said. Um, agriculture land, especially at KL's, this whole coastline. We need a meeting to be done and I'll make it a word to you folks with our senators. And so happened, we have our district for forty, uh, forty, forty-five representatives agriculture chair, but done nothing for us. But we are affected by a lot of uh entities, including uh, well, actually, we need to support with NOAA and Fish and Wildlife because even our monk seals that over at the Ohike Lolo area got slaughtered by dogs. Because they're coming from the mountains, went to the ocean and killing our monk seals, even our migrant birds. So we'll get these people into this meeting as well too. The Noniquuli Board, all nine six seven nine two board officials, we need that. And our state senators, Gabbard and Tim Richards, Ikoyt, uh, Favella, uh, Wakai and Senator Shimo Bukur, who sat down in the meeting, said nothing on the twenty ninth of February. So we're gonna have to make this thing happen. That's a solution. Because we already know the funding's gonna be there, you're gonna provide the fundings, okay? But we need all the federal sectors as well too, because a lot of entities is being affected, our natural wildlife, the monk seals. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to questions online. Oh, okay, oh, uh, Po'okele, I believe you had your hand up first. Uh, if you can unmute yourself and ask your question. Um, Jeffrey, maybe you can request a
Hello, you can hear me.
Oh, okay, there you are. We, we can hear you. Go ahead and ask your question.
Uh, my number one question, I give one concern. Are you guys taking concerns or I just had a concern as a community member. Well, a law board and I mean a law chair and board, I just wanted to um commend you guys on the great job you guys doing in such a tough community that we have so much issues going on. Um, also like come in, you know, people that I seeing online, guys like John Naputi, Travis, Uncle Ed Warner, Austin and Anticale Sosiro, who just diligently been just fighting for the betterment of the whole west side from Nanakuli all the way down to KL. So thank you guys for diligent and everybody who's on this meeting online or at, or in person. We all generally care for the commu, um, the community. The concern that I have as a resident that loves this community is we had somebody come on earlier that just had one big blowout at, in the Ever Beach Neighborhood Board meeting. And I just, his name is Favella. And I just said that his, his problems is leaking into ours and it wasn't waste of my time to even listen to him on this meeting. I know there's nothing can be done about it, but I just like comment everybody over here, like I said, like we all here trying to better the community. No matter what we stand on, we get different views, but we try to work together. I just would, would just be kinda disgusting to see if something like that comes into our neighborhood and, and start leaking out and kind of causing division and more peleke amongst ourselves down here. That's my concern. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, okay, uh, we're gonna move on to Bridget. Uh, just a reminder, this is questions for Department of Agriculture. So if our comments and questions could be um directed to the presentation. Uh, so go ahead, Bridget, if you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Um, I wanted to check to see is DOA gonna work more closely with DLNR when it pertains to the agricultural crimes? I know there is not very many DLNR game wardens and this is across the island in general. And many people, one, like you folks said, can't handle hiking your mountains to find half of the problems. Well, I think that's just anywhere. It's not just the Ynai coast. And then you get the good ones, but they're eventually chased away because their life is threatened by these same poachers, same type of poachers, I should say, that um we were faced with at um KL. So what is the steps that DOA is gonna take to work with DLNR and DLE um moving forward?
Thank you. Just to make sure I understood the question, how are, how's the Department of Ag gonna work with DLE and DLNR moving forward? Okay, um, DLE has been from the jump, like they just got enacted and they jumped in two feet. Um, some of the recommendations by the board is something that we'd like to propose next year because they're doing this without any, any additional funding. That's, this is not even core mission, but they're doing it because it's right for Hawaii. The, with DLNR, um, you know, we're working on another piece around with, with DLNR and, and uh, the woman that mentioned MOA, that really does help to lay out the, the roles responsibilities clearly. And so I, I'm, I'm really taking that to heart to, to do that with DLNR because the Department of Ag doesn't have an enforcement option, hence the partnership with DLE and HPD. But our lands kind of not intermingled, but they either butt each other or DLNR has some lands with ag on it. And so having that tighter, tighter connection is absolutely important. And my experience in working with DLNR so far, my time in the state um, has, has been really positive and that they're willing to, to figure this out going forward. On the job side, statewide, been hard to fill a ton of positions. I can't speak for them for those positions, but let's, let's deck some of this. And if we can prep these questions and I'll, I'll write some of, write these down to be ready for, for that town hall to be able, to be answered by the respective departments. So thank you.
Very good. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, okay, um. It doesn't look like we have any more questions here in the room, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. Uh, Dexter, I wanna thank you and you should probably give Jared a thank you also because he took a good brunt of all the questioning.
Absolutely. Jared, it wasn't on purpose. I was late. I promise. I promise. But no, um, really, DLE has been phenomenal to work with. So I know they did take a lot of the, the, the first response at, at this meeting. Um, but, but huge mahalo to Jared and the department.
Yes, very good. And we do wanna thank you both for coming in person. It shows a lot of regard for our community and what we're going through um, and how this is providing relief to our people and to our community. So uh, mahalo you for coming in person. Uh, I will stay in touch uh for our follow-up in our next meeting, but thank you both very much uh and drive home safely. All right, we are gonna be moving on to a monthly official, uh, officials' monthly reports. I'm gonna go out of order at this time. Uh, we are going to uh have the officials' monthly reports from the officials that are here in the room. Uh, so we can give them a first um, uh, chance to speak on the microphone and then we'll go ahead and move on to online. So uh, right now, uh, in order for who um is here in the room, we'll go ahead and start with Erwin, uh, mayor's uh, Rick, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Erwin Koata, if you can go ahead and give your report and then you can roll it over to Board of Water Supply.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, board members, hello everyone in the community and online. Um, Erwin Koata, um, I've submitted my uh mayor's rep report. I don't have anything new beyond what's on the report except I just wanted to note that the mayor, as I'm sure as I'm sure everyone knows, the Mayor's Town Hall meetings has started. For the Leeward Coast, that meeting is scheduled for May second. It's gonna be at Thursday, May second, seven PM over at the Nanai Kopono Elementary School. So everyone is encouraged to come out and ask questions and participate. With that, I happy to take any questions.
Okay, very good, Board members, any questions for Erwin, Mayor's report? Okay, open to community, none in the room, seeing none online. We're gonna go ahead and, do you have a question for Mayor's report? Okay, go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Austin Salcedo, Erwin, for May seconds Town Hall, would that be stand up like this and before the mic and ask a question? Awesome, not, not that, that picture-taking thing, that was difficult.
Actually come out, ask questions, ask anything you like, Mayor wants to take anything you want.
Are you sure?
I'm sure. I'm gonna be there, so you can ask me anything you want.
Hey, Ed Warner again. Hey, I wanted to see if you could talk to the mayor about today, he mentioned about repealing Act Seventy-three. I don't think that's a good idea. I mean, he still would have to go to the state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no questions online, we'll go ahead and give your report for Board of Water Supply.
Thank you Chair again for Board of Water Supply. Again, I've submitted my report, I don't have anything new. Beyond that, there were no main breaks last, last month, so I don't have anything new to report beyond what I've already submitted. So with that, I take it, happy to take any questions.
Okay, Board members, any questions for Board of Water Supply? Go ahead, Board Member Corona.
Yeah, Erwin, Board of Water Supply, Sewer Lines. Same organization, different organizations.
Sewer Lines is managed by Department of Environmental Services, that's correct.
All right, so, well, since... For the mayor, I guess for the mayor's report, then I'm sorry, I'm going backwards a little bit. If that's okay, Chair, if I can go backwards for a moment.
Sure, go ahead.
So with the potential requirement or for the requirement for the conversions of the cesspools to septic and/or tap into the existing laterals for the sewer lines. And I looked at the GIS mapping of all the, the existing sewer lines and I see so many areas without the sewer lines there. So this is more for the Department of Environmental Services, whereas if the state is gonna require the conversion off of cesspool or to tap into or install a septic system, before that could happen, my, my thought would be that the, that the city environmental services would need to extend the laterals throughout before they even make any requirement for anybody. So I would go back to my state legislators and I'll talk to them about that separately. But I just wanted to ask, is, is, for, for them, is there a plan to extend all those laterals in areas so the, the, the homeowners have the option to tie into something versus having to do a septic system?
I'll, I'll submit that as a question to the report.
Thank you.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, question for Board of Water Supply?
Water Supply?
If you had one for the Mayor's, okay, go ahead.
Took a loop there. I'd like to inform the mayor that there was a Senate Resolution Fifty-three, urging the Department of Health to convene an informal working group to access the registration and monitoring of all group living facilities as described. It's an adopted resolution for all the nine-six-seven-nine-two and for the whole entire island, Maui, Kawai, Molokai, Big Island. It's all Senate Resolution. And here's a copy of Alcohol, Drug and Abuse Division, John Valera, his statement as well here. And I'll, I'll send you a copy of this thing, okay, Erwin? Yeah, thank you. Just to make, make an involvement because the planning department has conditional use permit to be involved with this thing as well. So it's an intake, it's a buy-in for all Department of Health, for this working group to include this county now as well, for all islands as well, to be monitoring these things for the registration. Because there was a lot of unregistered group living facilities around the island, okay? Just gonna structure it, that's all I have, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, next up, please state your name for the minutes.
Tony Victor, to ask them this too. How is one cesspool surcharge gonna stop global warming? And why not, why are we only given one solution as tie into sewer? Why not we allow the reciprocity and the same, you know, conditions of the other states use a federally approved wastewater system?
Okay, very good, all right, go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Hi, Shelby Billion, you can ask Uncle Rick a couple of questions. What is his budget and plan to replace the hundred-year infrastructure piping, which is the water supply from the Wahoo, such as Red Hill and everything? Because it's, hasn't been changed over a hundred years, there's over two hundred miles of pipes that needs to be changed. I would like to know what the budget and plan is for that because I wish you're doing it for Lahaina. And obviously we need to prepare because we have those smart meters you're being charged for, but you're still being charged same exorbitant price because there's puka holes in your pipes over a hundred years. Not only you guys, the entire Wahoo, I feel like we're getting extorted, I'm not sure if Rick knows. Because the Board of Water Supply, we went to this William Isla long time ago, before DHHL. So you just ask him, thank you.
Okay, very good, all right. I think, I believe that's everyone, okay? Thank you very much, Erwin, for being here in person, thank you very much. Next up, we will go ahead and have our councilwoman, Andrea Topola, give her report. Thank you so much, Councilwoman, for being here.
Hi, Aloha Board, Aloha Board members, thank you, Aloha community. So I wanted to, first off, I think, oh, I think he left. I wanted to address a few things that happened before so that I can kind of help out. You know, the Chair and I were at the Ranchers Cattlemen's Meeting at Lady of R'K'au. And what I had suggested to them, which I think is what he's looking for, so Deputy was saying, I need a starting place, I need a starting place. I really think the starting place is to have one weekend of heightened enforcement. So last year, when we had multiple shootings over multiple months, we basically got HPD to do checkpoints everywhere in Wainai. We had like seventy special duty officers out here, we did eighty arrests, a hundred sixty citations. But the heightened enforcement was basically for us to check all these different spots that really were kind of going rapid, that was parks areas, it was Hakemo, it was the boat harbor. So what I would suggest is that we do a heightened weekend of enforcement with DoCare, with the, with DLE and that we actually do this on ag land in, in all of the areas where we're concerned at. So I'll work with them on that, I think that really our community would benefit from seeing something like that. I also brought up in the meeting that many of our law enforcement officers are not as familiar with ag laws. And so it would behoove us to have a weekend of education for all the officers, educating on what laws for trespass, what laws for ag land, so that everyone can kind of catch themselves up that if they do get called to a particular property, they would know how to inform a resident on what to do. Secondly, I did wanna say that I introduced Resolution Twenty-four Eighty-One, and that's in regards to the landfill. I would agree with Uncle Eddie that I was, of course, disheartened to hear that they're back to square one with trying to figure out things for the landfill. However, I still think that our best suggestion, and I don't know what everyone thinks here, would be to put it back into the Landfill Advisory Commission. And the reason why I'm saying that is because we have no idea how any decisions are being made. We don't know when there's, you know, monthly meetings where we can chime in and give our input. We have no idea what property is being discussed next. One year ago, almost to the date, we had Deputy Director stand right here and tell us that Waipio Peninsula was the place and we were set, and now we're not set. So unless we put it back into a commission, I really don't know when or how we would know how anything is going. So that is my suggestion, and I would say that, you know, my opposition to using the property tax to compensate for land around PVT was threefold. And I know that there's a lot of community members that disagreed, some that agreed, but I introduced this resolution to try to give us a way forward. And in the resolution, I put that one, the mayor should determine by the end of this year, what are the options? Because they gave the Landfill Advisory Commission six and they turned down all six. So instead of telling us one by one what they're pursuing, give us a list of options that you're looking at so that we know that you're not just gonna do one every year and then get shut down and do the next one every year. The second thing that I suggested is that we should have twenty-four-seven convenience center. A twenty-four-seven convenience center is, I think, easy as far as the amount of waste that we've held for all these decades of years. Our convenience center gets shut down or closed on a regular basis because it's too small. So I also suggested that we should have heightened trash patrol at all of our parks. If we still have the landfill and they have no future site, then we will still have it after 2028. So what then can we do now to compensate the people? And those are the three reasons why I oppose using the property taxes. One, I wanna find something that's fair for everybody. Two, I wanna find something that is not gonna just pertain to a private property. And three, I wanted to make sure not to chip away at property tax because that's our base for the city. That's how we provide salaries for all the services that we have in the city. The second resolution that I proposed that we'll be voting on for the first time tomorrow is a salary commission resolution, we will be voting on seven. As you know, last year, the salary commission kind of ran away with a sixty-four percent increase that enraged many people. So some of the suggestions that are being put forth, mine specifically says that there's a cap of five percent that they can never go over, that we should term limit the salary commission members. So you can look through it, but there's various suggestions there. Next weekend, we'll be doing a community cleanup, if you guys wanna be a part of it. And we are working with parks to restore the area from deep holes all the way to Ulihava Canal. There was a press release about it and I can send it to you guys if you haven't seen it yet. I wanna thank Board Member Corona for emailing me today because I just put in my round two of amendments for the budget. We are putting in the drainage improvements again for Kula Alpuni, but some of the other things you suggested, such as trimming along Kula Alpuni, we can do that already without budget. And then he also suggested improving all of the broken rock walls at all of our beach parks. And we can actually do that without putting it into budget. So we put in a riser and we're gonna follow up with you on that. So there's various other things in my report, but I just wanna thank you guys for your time. I wanna thank the community members, I especially wanna thank Uncle Eddie, you know, I know he's a huge advocate. He comes out here every time he can to advocate to close down landfills and to advocate for safety on, you know, on our roads. And if you didn't know, we just got speed bumps in front of Miley Elementary on Kula Alpuni Street. I can't tell you how long I've waited for that. When I was a rep, I asked for it and I wanna say and just be clear, the city didn't do it, DOT did it. So we wanna thank Ed Sniffin because he's the one who did that and they did it up at Palaila in front of Makakila Elementary. I think every elementary needs to have these for safety for the kids. We've already had very close near-death experiences on Kula Alpuni because of mopeds hitting kids, all kinds of things. So I just wanna thank DOT for, you know, listening to our voice and finally getting that out here. So I'll take any questions.
Very good, thank you much, Councilmember. Any questions, Board members, go ahead, Board Member Corona, then Board Member Myers.
Yeah, just a couple of things, Councilmember. Land, the land use commission, I guess, like for the land, I'm, I'm, I know this is gonna be a hot topic on May second.
It should be.
The mayor's gonna get a earful, I'm sure. But my, my concern was that, I, I thought I heard it coming out of his mouth today or I heard it on the news today that, that they are no longer, that he's holding on to his promise of not putting a landfill in the Leeward Coast on federal land. I thought that's what I heard today. And so that concerned me, that, that one term, federal land, because we all know the only federal land is Lululela. We've been talking about that before, but when you make a statement like that of no federal land, well, there's a lot of other land out here that's not federal. And that concerns me that, that they're, they're, they're backs against the wall. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because they had asked for a two-year extension and the land use commission had to approve that extension. And they're still fighting over that extension, which hasn't even been approved yet. And we're already coming to that two-year mark. So I, I'm just concerned that within the administration itself, with the land use commission, they're going nowhere, they're gonna kick the can and then we'll be back, just like you said. So what is your recommendation? Because I know that the mayor, at times, he'll have a little, he's punching back, he'll punch back a little bit, you know? So, so when we, when we talk to him, I know when I'm there and I'm gonna bring this up, it's already beaten the dead horse. What is your recommendation on how to approach this with the mayor at this meeting? Because it's a very sensitive subject, the city has kicked the can, the land use commission has kicked the can. So now we're in a very bad situation right now, so I, I like your advice on this.
I will say that in our hearing that we had, we used, or Augie used the word kick the can and they got really mad at us. And I was like, but that's the truth, though. So if kicking the can means there's no end in sight, that's what we feel like, there's no end in sight. I can't see the end, I don't know where it is. And the first thing I think you guys should do is, one, we should be less worried about where the new site is and more worried about that they need to get it out of here. Meaning that I know that they're looking for sites, but notwithstanding, the question we keep asking is, are you gonna hit the 2028 deadline? And they keep saying, well, maybe, the answer is no. If you don't have a site by the end of this year, the answer is no. You're not gonna hit the 2028 deadline, you cannot be realistic with yourself and say, I don't have a site, but I think I can move Waimea Na'ole Gooch by 2028. So I think that needs to be clear and it's okay, you know? I remember the day when Ed Sniffin told us that we're not gonna have a secondary access route and the news outlets are like, are you mad? Everyone is like, we're tired of getting lied to, we know it wasn't gonna happen, finally someone said it. I think that we gotta come to terms with ourselves. If you know you're not gonna hit the 2028 deadline, then just say it, own it. Now, once you own it, now move from there. Again, my suggestion is give a list, a new list of properties and put it back into an advisory commission because there needs to be public transparency. I can't guarantee that behind closed doors, anybody's working on this. I don't know who is, I can't name them, I'm not sure. And they'll say, oh, it's Director Babcock, you know what Director Babcock does? He runs the entire ENV, he has hundreds of employees. How much free time does he have to worry about this plan? So you need to ask yourselves without public transparency, how do we know this is being worked on every day, every night, every week, every month? We don't know, unless they hire a specific consultant, which they haven't done. And so I think the third thing is like, once it gets into that, then they need to have regular meetings and set out a timeline, because if it's not 2028 and you don't have a list, then obviously you need to find a new timeline. So that would be my suggestion to you guys. One, get realistic, we're probably not gonna hit 2028. Two, have some transparency, throw it back into an advisory commission so we can track it, give them a list so that we know what you're looking at, so we're not all clueless. And three, develop a timeline that you think is realistic based on the properties and based on the time that you have to allocate to try to get this done. Because that would be my question, who's doing this every day? And how much time, since the time we've been until now, have they spent? Eight hours a day or eight hours a month or eight hours a year? Because that would, that would make a huge difference on whether or not we're getting close to the goal, I don't know.
Very helpful, thank you for that response, Councilwoman. Go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Thank you Chair, I have three questions on three separate topics. I'll start off with the easy one. Your Resolution Twenty-four Fifty.
Yes.
You say here that the following question will be placed on the 2024 general election ballot. Shall the revised city charter be amended to establish a Department of Ocean Safety and remove ocean safety responsibilities from the Department of Emergency Services? Now, I support the resolution and what it wants to accomplish, but how is that message gonna get out to the community before the ballot so that they can understand and make an informed decision? Is the city gonna put money into advertising if this resolution pass?
No, so no money will be put forward towards promoting the resolution, but I can say that the ocean safety lifeguards are all, you know, all gonna help with it. I'm gonna make sure that it gets out there. But I will say that we're kind of in a little conundrum. Because I kid you not, we're on the last vote on this resolution and everybody's like, yay, 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 yay. On Thursday, the mayor's team introduced a resolution that they want to do it executively, meaning like without the ballot, which he has the power to do, the mayor has the purview and he can do that. So I need to get with them because tomorrow, instead of taking the last vote on my resolution, now we're gonna discuss how I'm gonna move forward with the mayor. So I'm not saying it's impossible, we could find a way together forward, but I will say that the last vote on this won't happen tomorrow, it's probably gonna happen in May and I will keep you updated.
My second question has to do, earlier this year, I think it was earlier this year, you had a houseless forum or, and I wasn't able to attend, I had a conflict in my schedule. But is there any way that you can come to our Housing Zoning Planning Committee or someone to give us the results of what happened? Because I just heard, you know, there was a Supreme Court, I think, had just made a ruling or our local court made a ruling on the Lahaina homeless individuals, they almost seem to have like squatters rights. But my concern is that, you know, with the weather, the way it is, rainy, et cetera, during the summer, of course, it's nice and hot. You know, tend to think about what's happening with our homeless that are along the beach line. And so like, I still cannot understand how much effort is placed by, you know, the state capital as well as Honolulu Halei in increasing our taxes, increasing the cost of living in the state for us that work. But in addition to that, we have other issues with, you know, those who have mental issues or cannot make ends meet because it's hard in this state and then they end up homeless. So I'm just like, why can't we get together and... So I'm just like, why can't we get together and solve that problem? So I guess my question is, how, how can we get informed of the solutions and see how the needle is being moved? Especially during an election year, everybody makes promises. And then four years down the line, we get new promises. Two years down the line, we get another promise or we get another individual. And, and, and just like what you're saying, the ball keeps getting kicked down. You know, I just, I'm wondering how we can handle this issue.
I can give you a report from the homeless symposium and I can give you a report of what we're doing. So I can only speak from my own efforts, um, which are not necessarily large city efforts, just my own efforts with community members here. So in August twenty-twenty-two, we started at depots and we just did from depots, no joke, to just Nani Keola, which is like one block. But there was like seventy people. I don't know if you guys remember that two years ago was like everywhere, right? So we focused on the one block, meaning like I met with homeless and had homeless services at City of Joy for four days, a week, for sixteen weeks until we housed almost half of them. So what I did was I intensified the amounts of services and the amount of in, you know, uh, contact I had and it worked. We house six, uh, sixteen people and then we worked on the next section from Nani Keola to Lululele. So I can say that next week, when we do the cleaning from depots to Ulehaava, that actually signifies each block that I worked on and us restoring that whole area. When I started in August twenty-twenty-two, there was a hundred and fifty homeless from depots to Ulehaava. Right now I'm working with fifteen. Fifteen is way less than we've ever had in that area. And I can tell you guys how we've been doing it because personally, I know each of them by name. And personally, we've been trying to solve some of the issues in conjunction with our service providers. So I'm not replacing Kialaha West, they work with me. But I also work with Catholic charities. I work with the prosecutor's office. I get people into community court. I work with Work Hawaii. We also involve homeless shelters. So what I do is it's like a clearinghouse. So when they come to LMS, which is in between Mojihii and Kahal Street on Monday, Wednesdays, five to six, I have at least eight to ten services there that we can help them with all at once in one hour while they're eating a hot meal. On Monday, Thursday, I do it from twelve to one at River of Life across the, right next to Seven Eleven and Miley. So I'll give you the report on it, but I'm telling you that it's a combination of restoring public spaces to the public. At the same time, we're reconnecting individuals with resources. But I mean, as you guys can see, I've, I've had an impact, but like block by block. So I, I think the key is like, you got to move in small areas. You got to go really tiny areas, but you got to go intense in the tiny area. And that's not necessarily a city plan or a state plan. It's just my plan because I think it works. So all the businesses in this area, Wine I Store, they've given jobs to at least sixteen of the people. Koquitos gave a job to one of the people. The ironworkers gave a job to two of the guys that work with me. I mean, many of the people here on the coast, like Sherkan, Chris Maroka, I call them up daily and I'm like, can you hire this person? Can you hire this person? So we've been getting people jobs, we've been getting them IDs, I've been clearing citations. So a lot of that is heavy lifting that not a lot of people can do. So I will give you the report and that will clarify a little bit of how we've done it here. And I hope that we can do it similarly. Because the way I'm doing it is not by any city grant that I have or anything. It's really just connecting people into churches that are already doing very good work.
Thank you. And then, um, David, you're going to follow up with that report and then we can agendaize it next month on our committee? Yeah. And then, um, the last question. So the landfill issue is coming up with the Waimeanalo Gouge, et cetera, the taxes. You know, I just want to make it straight for the record with the community. We voted as a board regarding that bill so that regarding half a mile radius tax exemption, we voted no because we said as a board that we felt the whole Waimea Moku should get tax exempt. We've had the landfills, Waimeanalo Gouge, the cities, you know, landfill as well as a private landfill in our community, then we should all get exemption, not just half a mile. And I bring this up because at our housing committee in December and then they didn't come in January and then it came in February, RJ Martin Green Homes Hawaii, they want to build a hundred seventy-five homes behind Second Save. But they're going back to the drawing board. But that's within the half mile radius of, of PVT landfill. And then we got Claudia Shea as well, who's going to do a self-help. That's within the half mile radius. So I don't understand, like the message is, it's pilau, it's unhealthy to live next to a landfill. Although we get a lot of illegal dumping going on in the community. And then, but when it comes to money, the homeowner saving, what happens if we have like these new developments that are popping up next to Waimeanalo Gouge, next to, um, you know, PVT landfill? Does the permit office just sign off even though there's a bill that's saying we shouldn't be, it's unsafe to live next to a landfill? So where is this, what is the status on that bill right now?
Are we talking about the bill that was deferred?
Yeah, so it's right now, it's still just deferred, I know.
Yeah, it's, it's not going to resurface and that's why I said that I'm, I'm introducing a resolution to try to get at it. You know, I would agree that this is complex. I would agree that a mile around one area is going to be difficult because in the long run, if someone says, I have been disadvantaged by, let's just talk about, uh, what is, uh, the wastewater? You know, the one right by Pizza Hut? I'm disadvantaged because it stinks there. My, like, so after, over time, there are many facilities and I would argue a lot of them are in our community, right? Which goes back to the whole, our whole community should benefit from this. Not only do we have the wastewater, we have landfills, we have HECO, we have all of, like, I would say ninety percent of all of the green, clean energy projects, but we're holding, holding, holding the host of it. So please look at my resolution. We can talk offline about it, but I am trying to find ways for us to have some benefit, but in a way that it will not affect our tax base and bring down the services in our community that to my, in my opinion, already are junk.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, I apologize, I had to step out. Um, I'm not sure if you got a chance to, okay, uh, one, one second and then I'll go to you. Um, can we share just a little bit about the closure of Uleavas? Yeah, I, I don't know if that was discussed and if it was, that's fine. I can go back and read the minutes. But if you didn't get there yet, if you could just kind of go into detail other than what we've seen previous, uh, very little of.
Yes, so um, I, let me just look at the dates real quick. So I believe they're going to be giving notices out next week, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. Ooh, I could be wrong. It might be the twenty-fifth. I don't have the press release in front of me. But Wednesday or Thursday, they're going to be giving notices. And then I believe that on Friday, they're going to be doing a stored property ordinance. So a stored property ordinance is basically enforcing park rules because long-term camping is not allowed from depots to Ulehaava. So that's what's going to happen on the twenty-sixth. On the twenty-seventh, we're going to be doing a cleanup with community members that are going to be helping to clean the area. But that stretch from depots to Ulehaava will be closed. So from the twenty-fifth through May first, it will be closed. You're going to see the orange like thing, whatever it's called, you know, the one they had at Lahialahi when it was closed. So we're closing it down because DPR is going to get back at refurbishing the sand, cleaning out. I can tell you that I just cleaned that area in January, but we tried our best to clean it good. But guys, it was, there's stuff all inside the sand, all inside, solar panels, wood, couches. So we pulled off as much as we could, but we wanted it to, you know, to have a good time to restore that whole area. Because like I said, we've been housing many people there. We need to restore the public beach to the public.
Okay, great. Uh, one question and then I'll move to board member, uh, Corona. But does that include the, near the highway side as well? Because I noticed that they're starting to migrate a little bit closer to the highway, to Farrington Highway. So when you say from depots to Uleava, does that include the entire, from the coastline to the highway?
So the parks is where the wall is. So when you talk from the highway, that's called an easement and DOT has the jurisdiction over the easement. Now, whether or not people will go in the easement, we will have to work with DOT on that. I don't think they will. We have talked verbally to everybody in the area, one by one, so.
Okay, perfect. Very good. Thank you, board member Corona.
Yes, I just, just a comment. I, I just, I was shocked when I was at the zoning committee. Um, was it last week, I think it was? And one of the, one of the topics was a, a house or something over on the other side of the island. Um, and I forget what the location was. But I remember that the entire neighborhood board voted against it about the, the project. And they, and then still the, the, the committee said thumbs up, make it so. And so I was, I was a little taken back because when I see, when I, when, when a community gets together and then an entire board, I think it was twelve-member board, voted twelve to zero to not recommend this go forward. But then the, the zoning committee still let it go forward. Is that a typical thing that happens in, in, in those committees like that? Or, you know, is the voice of a neighborhood board never really taken into consideration for things like that?
Well, I will say that I'm not, yeah, I'm not on the zoning committee, but I did attend that hearing because we had Bill fifty-eight in there. I will say that part of what we do as city council members is we approve SMAs, which is special management areas. And this is not based on whether we like or don't like a project. We vote on whether they are following or not following the law. So if DPP comes forward and says they filled out all their applications, they're within their rights to build here. They've done all of the, you know, the things that they were required to do, all of the EISs, EIA's, the ant studies, the fire ant. They have done what they are allowed to do and they are allowed to build where they, where, where the law allows them. So I'm not saying that every single time a neighborhood board opposes a project that the council doesn't listen. But I would say that based upon somebody coming, if, if we feel like they have tried their best to communicate with the neighbors, with the community, with the public, that is what they're required to do. But if they are following the law, we are not approving whether or not, oh, I like that house or, oh, that's appropriate there. We're approving whether or not they have done everything that DPP has required them to do. So I hope that that's clear.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to community questions. Community, any questions for our councilwoman? Uh, go ahead, uh, make your way to the microphone and online, if you have a question for our councilwoman, please raise your hand. I'll call on you after in person. Thank you.
Hello, Ed again. I, I know Bill thirty-seven came out, um, and I was a part of that because we lived there. Although, you know, for me in the sixties, that's why that bill, I just wanted to ask, if I could ask, uh, councilwoman, what is the city and county budget? What would be the city and county budget?
So in twenty-twenty-three, the city and county, I believe, uh, in property taxes did fifty-one billion.
Oh, now you know why I was asking that question. But, you know, we, we lived there our entire life too, especially on these roadways too. So that, that, that was one of the questions. And one other one I wanted to ask, um, about Uleava, the cleaning of Uleava Canal, you guys know I brought that up, you know, last year with Bill thirty-seven. You know, I, I know that Canal need a lot of cleaning too. And I think you're working on that too, yeah? The, the cleaning of, uh, Uleava Canal. Um, one other one that I wanted to say, you know, if there's any way that you can, you know, have the city maintain our homestead road? Because apparently nobody maintaining them. I'm not saying they got to own the homestead, but come out and maintain them. Maybe we can get our speed humps in a half, you know, going. Because apparently, um, Ed Sniffin and the, uh, transportation, we put up the ones up on a top side of the ad and they were going to replace, I mean, not replace, but they were going to continue the bottom ones. But apparently Hawaiian Home said, don't worry, we got it. I don't see Hawaiian Home was trying to get nothing done, you know, up in the valley. I mean, we look at our fire breaks. You know, I think the city can do a good job if there's any possibility you can, I'll put that. And I know, um, uh, fifty-seven and fifty-eight with the gambling houses, we just want to see that, uh, how, how does that going?
Thank you.
Uh, so board member Corona was there, but I do think that they're going to defer fifty-seven, uh, for legal reasons, seeing as though they're trying to give, uh, use a criminal law and then issue a civil penalty. And so the lawyers kind of disagreed on that. I do think fifty-eight is going to live. Fifty-eight is giving the authorization for HPD to share information with DPP regarding game rooms and whether or not what is in the game room is actually legal. This could be like fire code violations building, which most game rooms, everything is illegal inside. So I'm putting forth one amendment and we're hoping in May that we'll have the hearing and that it'll go through. So that's where we're at with the game room bills. Okay, go ahead.
Just wanted to know, um, on fifty-seven and fifty-eight, um, you know, I know DPP ain't on law enforcement, um, on the criminal side. But I was wondering if, um, that the city ever got in touch with, um, public defender, which I guarantee you going to be fighting this, maybe the attorney general, and especially who's going to charge them? Is the prosecutor involved with this?
So one of the requirements for fifty-eight that the chair required me to do was to get a letter from the prosecutors, from DPP, from court counsel, as well as the, um, HPD, that they're all in favor of the bill. I will say that the prosecutor's office is not involved as fifty-eight has only to do with civil. So there's nothing criminal within Bill fifty-eight. And I've already asked Steve and Steve said, I'm not getting involved. I will do no prosecutions on this particular law.
I, I like to see that Bill get true because you guys see what's happening in our community, what's happening in the state. And, um, I just wanted our, uh, you know, that she can help us and make sure that it doesn't get appealed, um, Act seventy-three.
I would agree that Act seventy-three is going to be a super difficult conversation, which back to, if you guys want to take a stance on putting it back into a landfill advisory commission, like, I just don't think that that's even a valid solution that can be seen within the next four or five years. But I would love to hear what other solutions they have so that we're concurrently moving on multiple solutions. So thank you, board. I know I'm taking up a lot of time. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, one more question.
Great information. Go ahead, wrap it up.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, on the Ushland Commission, if we know it's, if there's going to be any changes, because we had guys sitting on a Ushland Commission that we don't know if they might be leaving. So, you know, we get guys in favor in what we're trying to do and relocate the landfill. If, you know, you bring in somebody else, they might disagree in what, you know, we oppose. So, or they might agree or disagree. To me, I think they would disagree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and, uh, move on. I don't see any questions online, so we're going to go ahead and move on. Thank you, councilwoman. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, so our representative, Darius Keela, is here in person. Uh, if you can give your report, thank you very much for being here. And then it looks like that's all the representatives in the room. Then we'll go to online. Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Armian Navy, I see you.
Okay, there we go. Hello, board and hello, Chair and board members. I, I just want to thank you folks for allowing us, if we're in person to do this. I think it's a little bit more equitable and fair, so thank you. There's so much happening right now, so I'll just kind of start with the most recent thing. I just got off the phone with Speaker Seiki. So right now where we're at at the legislature is in the middle of budget negotiation. We are not done. We're not agreed on for the House and Senate versions and whatnot. Uh, tomorrow is Wednesday. The best case scenario, we want to be done by this week because any fiscal bills need to be decked next week. So I will say it's been interesting nonetheless to go through this year, right? Because this is supplemental compared to last year's full budget. But really what's going on is, I think, I'll be just transparent in how what's conspired on Maui has kind of been the reason, I think, where we're just in limbo. And there was a resolution that I had introduced where we, you, you cannot gut and replace bills, but resolutions are different. We ended up changing the resolution to make the language that the Maui County Council passed a very fiscally responsible budget. Because the budget that was prepared by Mayor Bisson was four hundred million dollars in excess of the year before his budget with salary increases for his staff. If we are at the state level or making cuts to help Maui, the county needs to do the same. So in some ways, it was a slap in the face to the legislature. Because if they're asking for two hundred million dollars this year and hundred fifty next year, while proposing four hundred million dollars more in their budget, it is irresponsible. So I did do that resolution and then, so physically, that's kind of where we're at. While we're on the topic of landfills, I love my colleague Rep Blamosao. She had a same thing, HR seventy-seven, that was amended to request the YPO soccer complex be removed. I did vote no, not on the basis of the complex, but just reminding my colleagues that the county has still not fulfilled their promise of having a, a new site by two thousand twenty-two. And now it is two thousand twenty-four, fourteen hundred days till the closure date of two thousand December, I mean, two thousand twenty-nine and March third. So that's kind of where we're at. But I'll turn over to my newsletter. Um, there was the reso that was just adopted in the House, HR ninety-six. It was in coordination with the Salsedo's about the concern of illegal sober, clean and sober home operators that are not complicit with the law. So I just want to talk, I'm thankful for your folks' help on that, that resolution. We got the CIPs released from, that were appropriated last year going to this year, a million dollars for Nani Kapono, eighty, I'm sorry, eighty-five thousand for Nani Kapono, a million for the high school. As you folks know, I, now we have Principal Yudarbe, who's confirmed at the As you folks know, I, now we have Principal Yudarbe, who's confirmed at the high school. Uh, she was in the interim basis for retired Principal Darren P. Lealoa. So as she comes into this position now, she'll probably get full steam ahead for next school year. Um, and thank you folks again for your submitting on the resolution to urge the legislature to adopt, uh, GN seven four six for Sanoy Marfield, who has now been confirmed and awaits a full four vote. I anticipate she's gonna pass, but I thank you for taking the formal position as the bird to urge the governor. And so I know Andrea talked about depots and whatnot. I do wanna confirm that DOT is aware of the park closure and will be actively making sure for the period of the week that no trash or encampments will come onto the state's portion. So they are aware and we're gonna work closely with them. And then I just wanna highlight something that I think was brought up when I first got into office, was the stoplight at Ko'ama Street. Starting tomorrow, they will be getting a left turn signal. So I know it's taking a little bit. There was a speed survey, there was a survey done last summer. It was approved in November. Project Supply Chain allowed it to not get done up until now. But I thank you guys for helping me get that along the way. And then to Daniel's point about the Haime siren, Haime has confirmed that it's inoperable and they had to submit a work order request to the department, to Dags, Department of General Services. So I will keep you folks posted on that. And at this point, I won't take any questions.
Awesome. Very thorough report. Thank you very much, Rep. Keela. Go ahead, uh, Board Member Corona and then Board Member Myers.
Yeah, um, Rep., just, just real quick, um, I don't recall the House bill. I can't remember if it was a Senate bill or not. Uh, but it was briefed by the Chair of the Committee on, uh, Consumer Protection and Commerce about the insurance liability rates increase.
Yes.
Um, and then the state, the, the, obviously the statement is the, by, by increasing the liability requirement, therefore the insurance companies will not have to raise the rates. Estimates were between a hundred and seventy to two hundred and something dollars, um, uh, per individual, per policy. Um, so with that on top of, uh, homeowners insurance, hurricane insurance requirements, blah, 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 blah. The fact that, uh, that the House is looking to change something and sit there and say that it's, they'll just accept it and move forward, um, doesn't sit right with me. So I'm asking, what is your position on that? Um, have you reached out to the community? Have you talked to anybody? What's your consensus on changing or requiring a law to be put in place, um, that makes community members or members of the different states spend more money?
Yeah, so what Board Member Corona is talking about is there's an H, uh, House bill pretty much increasing the minimum auto insurance requirements. As you folks know, Hawaii has one of the lower auto insurance requirements. Um, to the news report that was actually put out, I would wanna debunk that some of it was not true. Because when I personally did my own increases based off of the minimums of the six-month period, my policy only increased by thirty-eight dollars. And that was what they did say. It was about a couple, a cup of coffee. But I do wanna highlight that we are now being penalized for the negligence of folks. We are being penalized for the folks who are not abiding the law. Right? That's what it's coming to because folks are not carrying insurance. So even now insurance being cheap, they're still not covering it. Because what it, what we are being told is if you get into an accident with the minimum requirements, it's not enough. So I've voted, I think, with reservations on the measure just to see what it's gonna look like. But I do wanna, the, the bill that you're referencing, there is a three-year setback, so it won't take, go into effect for another three years. But I, I will have to be frank in the sense that it's, it's gonna come. Because to the point that I'm making is that with the folks who continue to not abide by insurance and law of the road, we are all being subject to that. Right? Every year when they reassess nine, six, seven, nine, two, the zip code specifically, traffic incidents, accidents, it all plays into the part. And you folks see Farrington Highway just as much as I do. There is not a day during the week that someone's negligence affects all of us. So my position is I'm concerned, but we'll see how it goes. Because I believe it's going into conference, so it's not set yet.
And, and the, last, last question on, on the same topic. Is it, is there a cutoff? So if it did go to conference, there, there's a cutoff on when it can pass over to the Senate? Is that over?
Yeah, it's over. So now when we're in conference negotiation is figuring out what the increase looks like. But I don't think the three-year language will be touched. So that way that if it does go into law, there is the three-year, uh, delayed starting. But we'll have to wait to see what it looks like.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Board Member Myers.
Thank you. Thank you for voting no on the marijuana bill. Um, it's medical, it's sufficient. We don't need another recreation. You know, we already got alcohol for recreation. We got go to Las Vegas for a recreation, vaping, smoking. Um, and you make laws regarding that you need to be twenty-one or over, et cetera. So we don't need marijuana as another recreation. It's, it's sufficient with medical. My two questions are related to the GIA because of also the budget and then also the six hundred million dollars for DHHL. So regarding the six hundred million dollars for DHHL, um, because of Lahaina. I know Chair, I, uh, Chair Kali is saying he wants another six hundred million. Um, first year they encumbered, I think, hundred forty million. They got another four hundred sixty by the, by June of this year. Um, is that gonna be hampered when it gets flushed through the budget? Um, the second one is, how is it, I saw in Senator Miley's newsletter, there was all the GIA from in our community or organizations that serve our community. But how is that gonna be affected? And then again, the grand question is related to the budget. Last year, I remember after, towards the end of legislature, there was all this PD Kia and it came up in the news that, especially in the House. House members were very concerned that the budget was being pushed through really quickly without proper reviewing. What has the body, the Speaker of the House, but also the Senate Leader ensured so that the financial committees and the committee members, et cetera, is ensuring that every member has an understanding of what the budget is all about, have time to vet it, no different than what we gotta vet any issue, so that an informed decision can be made regarding the budget?
Yeah. Thank you, Board Member Myers. Um, several things. I voted no against marijuana. I'm transparent about it. You folks asked for it. Immunity asked for it. I was vindicated online for that vote. I wanna be very transparent. There were two threats made to me that arisen to the case that there was a report filed with the FBI. I vote the way you folks asked me and not just you folks, community. For the five calls I got in support, there were over three hundred calls in opposition from the community survey you folks filled out, the phone calls and the in-person testimony, all from this coastline. I am not elected to represent the state of Hawaii. I represent House District forty-four from Honaka Hale to Maile. That's it. That is my responsibility. So thank you for reaffirming that decision. So the bill is probably gonna pass this year to give DHHL an extra year to finish out the funding with the six hundred million dollars. They have not asked for an additional six hundred million because they have yet to expand this, expand the six hundred million. But the question will be, moving forward, is that how the department fulfills Act two seven nine will set precedent for the future? The biggest concern is that, right, my members of the, my colleagues wanna see DHHL be fiscally responsible with their monies. There was some revisions to Act two seventy-nine. I drew heavy criticism to Chair Watson because for sixty million dollars in Lahaina to put up two hundred houses, you can do four other projects and get double the return for the same cost. And if you're doing it appropriately based on the waiting list for Maui and the houses you're putting on Maui, you're addressing more than a quarter of the waitlist for Maui, but that is not equitable across every island. So I don't wanna be fully against the department, but I am concerned that, I understand Lahaina needs to be rebuilt. But my position has always been, you cannot take away from Waianae to help Maui when we still have needs and need fulfilling. Um, so to that next question about the budget, I'll be very transparent. I thought the process last year was okay. I think my colleagues will get frustrated and the same thing, right? If I don't get what I want, I'm not gonna go bang the house down. But to what, what Jermaine is asking, Board Members Myers, there were changes from last year. They started a week early on budget negotiations, so now going into opening of conference on budget, they've done this a week earlier. But the biggest thing moving forward is just making sure how they move forward. So the House position, which was not necessarily the Senate position, is that everything we've agreed to is read out line by line for the reason the public can know what we're talking about. Going into conference as well, the House position is to read the agreements that is being proposed on every CD one that has not necessarily been adopted by the Senate. But I wanna thank Speaker Seiki really for taking that initiative to acknowledge the concerns of past processes that might have been viewed as unfair. But I did speak on the budget last year that every year we continue to come back and do what we have to do. But if I'm going to bash every process because I think it's something I wanted, that's not fair to my colleagues, right? There's one pie for all of us. I'm not mad that I only have one bill left, but it's not just what we do there, it's everything else. Did I answer everything? I think there was one question I missed.
Yes, you did. And it reminded me of something that I just recently watched in the committee regarding the budget. It was in the Education Committee. And education was given millions and millions of dollars for CIP. But it's gonna, uh,
It lapsed.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
What's gonna happen with?
Yeah, so Board Member Myers is talking about a DOE CIP lapse. When the budget deficit had come out from the legislature, the governor had asked departments to look at what they can cut to address what was needed. Every department took a cut to then now discover that DOE was sitting on monies that were not spent appropriately. Because if you do not encumber the monies by a certain time period, it lapses and returns to the general fund. The concerning thing is that there were projects almost four or five years prior to my taking office that were lapsing, that were, from my understanding, supposed to be completed. The House position of the budget we passed over reinstated every lapse CIP. So now it is determining if the Senate will agree to that. And that was upwards of over three hundred million dollars in projects. Four of them were for our Nanakuli schools. But as of right now, with the House position of the budget we passed, reinstated all the lapse funding. So new projects this year and the reoccurring projects from last year.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Representative Keela, for your, um, Keela, for your responses. Uh, we're gonna take, uh, Board Member, uh, Augustine, and then we're gonna move on, uh, to the next representative. So I apologize, community, if you do have questions, uh, please see Representative Keela afterwards. Just a time check, we've got thirty-five, forty, thirty-four more minutes and we've gotta get to some agendized items that we have to vote on. So Board Member Tech, Board Member Augustine?
Thank you so much. It's wonderful that you're talking about CIP. So I, congratulations on the awards that have gone to Nanakuli Elementary and also to, uh, Nanakuli High. So, uh, today there was a, uh, the Na'akupuna Council had awarded the Nanakuli Elementary second grade class with, uh, new bicycles. And so that was such a wonderful blessing to see the joy of the children and, um, them coming home with something that they can be prideful of and, you know, the community initiating stuff like that. Um, as far as the CIPs are concerned, I'm, uh, wanting to reach out to you to see if, one, you can attend our next Education Committee meeting. It's the last, uh, Tuesday of May. And then, uh, discuss with you what CIPs were not submitted within our district, uh, so that we can work together with the Edu, Department of Education, as well as with you at the state to, uh, encourage those reports go in, as well as better understand the process of how CIP is initiated once the funding is received by the school so that they can appropriate it and get it out and utilize the funding. Just kind of, you guys were talking about that already, so.
Yes, I do wanna share that the position that is overseeing CIPs, uh, the administrator will be leaving at the end of session. So I'm very concerned that we are gonna reinstate these funds and DOE is lapsing a position. I'm sorry, they're losing a position to help administer these funds. But I can, yes, if my schedule allows, I'll follow up with you. And Chair, one last thing, we're finalizing the details, but May will be the first town hall of the interim with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So we're looking more towards either middle or later May, but we're just confirming date and we'll probably be at the high school. But I'll let you folks know.
Very good. We're looking forward to hosting them again.
Yeah.
Um, so thank you very much. I do apologize. I, I'm sorry, we've gotta move on. I'm really sorry, but. For Representative Keela, do you wanna have the conversation with him outside? Okay, go ahead, Uncle Ed. Go ahead, last one, okay? Thank you, guys, and I'm sorry. I know this isn't our usual format, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Ed Werner again. I just wanna say it, um, boy, you're doing a hell of a damn good job by where you stand. That's why we vote for you. We vote you in. I just wanna say, you know, um, we, we had some bills out there and, and was the, the speed, the speed camera. We, we, we even had the, um, the zero point five. That didn't go. But if you look, those representative that went down this bill on the Big Island was rough. You, you guys can see what went happened to the community, the crashes, the deaths. Now, this was right after they killed the bill. Big Island, we get cracks. You know, just wanna thank Darius, you know, the hundred thousand, the eighty-five that you, you brought. You know, Stacy brought some things, a lot of things in our community too. You know, I just wanna tell you, thank you, you know, for allocating and pushing for one million dollars on the Alzheimer's bill. You did it. And one other thing that I wanted to thank you to on the transportation side, that, you know, I, I've been going there and talking and, and, and fighting and doing what I can for the community, for the state of Hawaii. And now we got the speeding cameras, they're looking into them. Um, there's a lot of good things gonna be coming out. You know, I just speak to almost two thousand kids today at Liliua High School, on underage, uh, drinking. You know, it was kind of intimidating for me, but I've been doing that at every school. Maybe I'm getting kind of used to, but you know, Darius, I just appreciate everything you do, boy. You know, we, we have this bill out there on Silver Alert, you know, let me tell, and, and, you know, Darius was one of them that really pushed too. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know, Bill twenty-three zero five? Yeah, HB came to the, um, Finance and it passed this like that. Right now it's in conference at the, the Senate side, so we cross our finger. What that bill does is, for people that has mental health, um, Alzheimer's dimension, this bill would sound the alert, the amber alert. You guys ever heard of the amber alert? This is what this bill is for. And you know, I, 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 you know, I was on a, on a Senate floor when, uh, Brenton O'Alla voted no. So we had twenty-four, um, um, people that supported. You know, we've been seeing our Kupuna missing up and down. And, and you know, that bill really did to pass and to help get our Kupuna safely back to their home where they live. And that's why I pushed so hard and, and my boy pushed so hard and Darius knows that. And we just appreciate you, boy. You running again? You got my vote, boy. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, with that.
I just wanna clarify, I'm not campaigning in this deposition, so for the record.
Thank you very much. We, well, we see your hard work, so.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on, uh, to Army.
Whoa.
At least it wasn't on you. It was on me. The camera was on me.
We'd like to follow.
We needed that. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Board members, community members, my name's Jason Kappas. I'm your U.S. Army Hawaii representative. So three quick things I just wanna touch on. Um, the next job fair is happening on the April eighteenth this week at the Honolulu Airport Hotel beginning at eight-thirty. The next one is the Training Advisory, so two training advisories. One's for artillery and mortar training, that's happening the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, both during the day and the nighttime. And then there's some aviation and demolations, demolitions training happening on the nineteenth of April during the day only. The third, this is the week of the prescribed burn that's happening on the, the training grounds in, in Schofield Barracks. There'll be, operations will take, like, take place during daylight hours and the Army Wildline Fire, Wildland firefighters will remain on site each night to monitor the area to make sure nothing happens. Finally, uh, it's been a while since I made this play, but we're always looking for opportunities to volunteer. Some of the two of the volunteer opportunities that we're doing recently is, there's a Kupuna food pantry down in Waianae that we volunteer at every month. And there's also a middle school that reached out to us. They were doing a Civil War Day where they talk about what things happen in the Civil War. So we're gonna go there and bring some of our. So we're going to go there and bring some of our equipment so they can compare and contrast kind of how things were at the Civil War and how we do things now. And we're doing that with our medical company. So please get in contact with me, we like some time so we can make sure we get the right team to you, but we're always looking for ways to volunteer with the community. With that, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Army? Questions, go ahead, Board Member Myers?
So quickly, regarding the prescribed burns on Schofield, I see that you said the training complex operations is where it'll be taking place. Is that the one that's close to the top where Kole Kole Pass?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The other side of Kole Kole Pass.
So we'll be probably seeing smoke coming from that area?
Depending on the weather pattern.
From the 15th through the 20th?
15th through the 20th, yes, ma'am.
Okay, mahalo.
Great question, thank you so much. Community questions online, okay, go ahead.
Hi, yes, Shelby Burn again. What is your contact information? Because I'm with the Lions Club, we have a lot of nonprofits, there's a lot of beach cleanups about the block, about the city. So how can people reach you or out to your office?
Sure. So my personal number is 808-673-3425. And for volunteer opportunities, we just like 30 days advance notice so we can make sure we get the right team. So we're kind of busy doing Army stuff so we want to make sure we get the right team involved with whatever volunteer opportunities.
Okay, very good. Lieutenant Colonel, thank you very much for being with us in person. Drive home safe, we will see you next month. All right, moving on to Navy. Victor Flynn, I believe Danny is going up first and then second will be Victor. Go ahead, hi Danny, thank you for being with us in person.
Thank you for having me. I will, we already sent the report, the full report earlier, so I'll just hit two of our points here. Navy Closure Task Force took over responsibility last month. So before, we were speaking about the Joint Task Force. Well, now the Navy has a task force and their responsibility is to clean it, complete the cleaning, remediation, and taking out the sludge and whatnot. So that's important, I think, for the community to understand. There's a new group there that's responsible just for cleaning, just for shutting it down completely. Next up, the long-term monitoring program for the drinking water. That program was finished this month, but the Navy has decided to voluntarily extend it for another year. So what they'll be doing, as of right now, they randomly tested more than 8,000 samples. So they're going to continue that program. So that's some information we also wanted to share. So I'll turn it over now to Uncle Vic.
Thank you, brother. Victor Flynn, Naval Facilities. We're hiring NavFac Hawaii. Is hosting a job fair April 30th at the Alamoana Hotels Garden Lanai, 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Check it out. Call Public Affairs for more information. You have the number as well, or you can come see me on the side. Also, HURX, our hurricane season is, hurricane season is June through November, but the Navy is actually conducting exercises this April, April 22nd through 25th. This will be mostly tabletop exercises, but we're getting ready for what's coming up. Being prepared is the way to go. Last but not least, Kole Kole Pass. Clear and passable in case of declared emergency. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Navy? Seeing none, no community, none online. Thank you very much, Danny. Thank you, Uncle Vic, for being here. Danny, it was nice to see you in person and we look forward to seeing you next month. All right, so we're going to move on to online officials' monthly reports. So I'm not sure if Gary is online for Governor's Rep. But Gary, if you are online for Governor's Rep, I'll have you unmute. If not, I'll go ahead and move on to Congresswoman Jill Tukure. She has a representative here online, I'll ask you to unmute. I don't see anyone, we'll go ahead and move on to Senator Shima Bukoral.
Senator, I'm going to hear you. Yep, there you go. Thank you so much. Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Yes, hi, hi. Okay, hello, everybody. I just have three things. Good news from Ed Sniffin. He reported that within about a year or less, DOT should be opening the locked portion of Pa'akea Road to create that second access. And there is, in the current draft of the budget bill, HB 1800 in fiscal year 25, there's $3.45 million allocated for that project. Ed Sniffin also reported that he is in ongoing discussion with Kole, about Kole Kole Pass with the military on the federal level. You know, and all this has been really, you know, brought to light the tragedy in Lahaina. So everyone is really working hard on making sure that doesn't get repeated anywhere in our state. And then the third thing is that I got great news from Mike Walker of DLNR that he is pursuing a grant for half a million dollars to put fire-dipping wells in each of the valleys along the Wainai coast. And with that, I've got my written reports submitted to you with some other exciting updates and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Very good, Senator, thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Senator Shima Bukoral? No, seeing none, community questions for Senator Shima Bukoral? Not seeing any online. Senator, thank you very much for being with us this evening. Thank you for your report, we did get your newsletter as well. So you have a good evening, thank you for being with us.
Mahalo.
Okay, very good. Okay, we can move on to board business now, that's all the- Okay, thank you, thank you, Jeffrey. Okay, board business. Board members, last month, Councilmember Andrea Topola had proposed that we give her CIP suggestions for budget fiscal year 2025. I did receive Board Member Corona's suggestions. I also had emailed suggestions over to Councilmember Topola. So if you do have any suggestions that you did bring here tonight, give them to me. I will go ahead and forward them over to Councilmember tomorrow morning. And then next up, we'll move on to nomination of Mr. Richard Lanford, a community member to be added as an official member to the Nanakuli Mailei Neighborhood Board Housing/ Zoning Committee and Transportation Committee. Chair, do you want, go ahead.
Since it's on the agenda, do we have to do a motion for it, since it's on? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion. So I make a motion to add Mr. Richard Lanford as a community member to the Transportation Committee and also the Zoning Housing Committee as a, as a community member.
Great, very good. Okay, we have a second from Board Member IO. We'll open for discussion, discussion, go ahead, Board Member Myers? Perfect, thank you very much. Board members, any other discussion, discussion from the community? Anybody online? Okay, very good, we'll go ahead and take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Oh, aye, sorry. I forgot I did that the last time. Okay, very good. Well, with unanimous support, Mr. Lanford, thank you very much. You are now added as an official member of the Nanakuli Mailei Neighborhood Board Housing and Zoning Committee and also Transportation Committee. I know your wealth of knowledge and your experience will be able to really bring great value to our committee. So thank you very much for your commitment. All right, very good, thank you. Okay, moving on to approval of Tuesday, March 19, 2024, regular meeting minutes for last month's March regular meeting minutes. We're going to go ahead and take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, approval for Tuesday, March 19, 2024, regular meeting minutes have been approved. Okay, we'll move on to March 2024, Board Member attendance and community meetings, public hearings. I'll give it over to Jeffrey to do a roll call of our, the meetings that we had attended in March of 2024.
All right, so let's go on to the list that I have, Member IO.
The meeting was attended by major community members, including Chair. Wainai Cares was the meeting, now that Wainai High School, I believe. I forget the date though. That was it.
Member Augustine?
The Neighborhood Security Watch on March 6th. The Hawaiian Affairs Committee meeting and the Park and Recreation Committee meeting, March 13. The Kole Kole Pass Navy Tour with Victor Flynn. The Broken Promises at the State Capitol with Representative Jean Ward on the 25th. Education Committee meeting on the 26th. Public Health and Safety Committee meeting on the 26th. The NHIS PTSD meeting on the 28th.
Chair DeCort?
Nanakuli High School Song Fest, City of Joy Food Drive, Wainai Neighborhood Board, Wainai Cares, Wainai Cares event. Let me see. Oh, Prince Kohio Festival, Nanakuli Beach Park. Kanakili's Easter Egg Event in Kapale.
Member Myers?
Wine Homes Commission meeting in Lahaina on March 18 and March 19. Broken Promises Part II. I was there with Tector and Augustine at the State Capitol on March 25th. That's it.
And Member Corona?
Let's see, the Committee, the House Committee, State House Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce and House Committee, Joint Hawaiian Affairs Committee in the House. That's it.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. We are moving on to committee reports. First up, I'll give it over to Chair Corona for the Transportation and then he'll carry that over to Housing and Zoning for his reports. Go ahead.
Okay, for the Transportation, had a very good discussion with the Hawaii Department of Transportation who attended the meeting regarding upcoming projects, current and future. So it's in the minutes, I'm waiting for the minutes to be provided. But one big thing was the, the roadwork that'll be done with the bridge replacement at Uliavas. Bridge replacement in conjunction with the, the third lane build for Fairington Highway. That's going to be taking place in 2026, roughly starting around 2026. So that's a major traffic point that's going to happen. So lots of community engagement is going to happen before then. So that's pretty much it for Department of Transportation. For Housing, we met with a developer who wants to develop four homes on the ridge up there, right past Akawai and Nanakuli up there on the mountain. The first set of homes, as you're coming around to Mali Ben. They want to build four homes up there. So we're in the middle of committee meeting them, very good discussion. They're coming back to the committee meeting tomorrow to answer some questions, follow-ups. And then so that's going on with that. Regarding the RJ Martin and the Lululele Home, Lululele Green Homes behind the old Nakatane property, behind SAC and Save, 100 and some homes. I haven't heard from them. He did reach out to me and he wanted to have a one-on-one discussion, but I turned that down and suggested that he needs to come out to the community, have an open community forum so the community can come out there and see what he wants to do behind SAC and Save. And then I haven't heard back since then. But other than that, Transportation and Zoning Housing Committee is tomorrow night at the Maile Community Park Center, beginning at 7:00 p.m. Thanks.
Okay, very good. And I just want to clarify, there was a motion, I believe, at the last Housing Committee that he would attend three Housing Committees before coming to the full board. Has that been fulfilled?
For the Lululele Green Homes 2 project, no, it hasn't.
Very good, okay, we're moving on. Chair Tector of the Hawaiian Affairs Committee and Park and Recs Committee is taking care of her Mo'opuna today. So we are praying for healing over her granddaughter and over her family. We're going to go ahead and move over to Education Chair and Public Health and Safety Chair, Malia Augustine, for your report.
Mahalo, Chair. We met on April, excuse me, March 26th. And this was a holiday for the city and county. And so we had to meet outside of the building, which was how we had to just handle the situation as the agenda did go out to the community and as well as invitations had gone out at the Kohio Day Festival. And so a table was set up outside of the Kalaniana Ole facility to continue with our meeting. And so the Education Committee, we had four in attendance. And this meeting, we discussed assisting schools and collaborating with schools to move forward in supporting education bills for the 2025 session. And we will also be meeting directly and scheduling meetings with each school in the district to better understand the needs of the school and assist with CIP applications for the 2025 session as well as understand whatever concerns the schools have that we can support as a board. For the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, we also had four in attendance. And at this meeting, we discussed supporting and I want to give our other board member, my Vice Chair for Public Health and Safety, an opportunity to share his resolution opportunity for the SRO.
Thank you, Malia. Currently working on a resolution in regards to the School Resource Officer Program that's currently in place now on the island of Maui and the island of Hawaii. We just don't have one in place here on the island of Oau. So reading the documents that I got furnished from Maui Police Department as well as DOE. It starts with finding out if you got funding. And as we already know, DOE had money, but we don't know where the money went, right? Or the money wasn't spent. So having said that, so the people involved with getting this resolution passed starts with me, number one. So I'm going to put my resolution together based on documents already typed. I'm not creating a new wheel, the wheel is already there. And the people that needs to be part of the wheel, DOE, Department of Education, the mayor of the City Council, the police chief, which is Chief Logan, anybody else in there would be the State Attorney General's Office and I believe Cooperation Council or the council members. All of those people in place in government have a lot to do with getting this program started. I'm just going to type up a resolution so that they can read it. And what they're going to read is comments from other states currently in the United States, which we're a member of, we're the 50th state. Currently, in the United States, there's 41 states that have this program in their state. We're one of the nine that don't have it. So when you look at it, it's working, but there's still school violence, though. And that's what this program is about, is to prevent school violence. But not only to prevent the violence, it is to educate. Number one, that program, police officer on the campus, educator, mentor. Last thing he does is enforce laws. That's the last thing he's going to do. Being a man of that word, I did the same job that's- Being a man of that word, I did the same job that's what. But I'm, I'm speaking from experience, speaking from all the things that I've done. It works. It, it really works. So, uh, having said that, I'm still working on that resolution right now. Just to let you know.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, okay. Uh, before we move on, uh, I just want to, oh, did you want to wrap that up?
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair IO. So we're gonna be working with the community to address, uh, public health and safety concerns and uh, administering a survey and, uh, going within the community to canvas this survey so we can get an understanding of how families feel as far as safety is concerned, especially being that there was a shooting within the area, um, as, on a school day before school had started. And if the school and the community is understanding what the protocol is gonna be, uh, as far as addressing safety primarily for our Kiki in the community. So if we can have participation and it's all anonymous, that way we can put forward bills within the twenty twenty-five session that can address safety concerns for our community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, so I just want to encourage community, uh, those that are here in the room and those that are online, please attend our committee meetings. Um, this is extra, uh, time and commitment that our board members make to have, uh, a longer discussion on these issues. As you'll notice here in our full board, that we don't have the time to, that it, that is required to do the work that we need to do in this community, which is gather community input. And so, uh, please, uh, let's encourage everybody to be there, those online. Uh, please, the, the, this is really how a lot of our agenda um, at the full board is formulated by what happens in the committees. So, and that's where we can have the time to open up discussion and have further discussion. So as we move on to announcements, uh, I'm gonna have the chairs, uh, just remind the public in the community, uh, when and where and what time is your, uh, committee meetings. Um, so go ahead and then, um, since, uh, Chair Tector of Hawaiian Affairs and Park and Rec is not here, then, uh, Board Member Augustin or, um, one of the board members can share about that one. But, uh, go ahead, Board Member Corona first, if you can share about your date, time and place for your Transportation Committee and Housing.
Uh, the Transportation, uh, and Housing, Zoning are typically held together on the same night, which is the, uh, third Wednesday of every month, uh, which means that we will be having a meeting tomorrow night at the Maile, uh, Community Park, beginning at seven PM for Transportation and then followed immediately after that by the Zoning and Housing. Uh, one caveat will be that, uh, next month in May, we'll be doing it on the fourth Wednesday because the, that I had to redo my permit and the, uh, um, they had already had a, uh, event scheduled for the third Wednesday. So I'll be shifting it one day, but it'll be in the, uh, it'll be in the, uh, the, uh, the agenda. But.
Thank you. For Chair, uh, for Chair of Hawaiian Affairs as well as Chair for Park and Recreation is Mapuana Tector. Those meetings are also held on the same day, every second Wednesday of each month at the Kalaniana Ole Beach Park, starting at six PM and then to follow, starting at seven PM. The Education Committee Meetings and as, and also the Public Health and Safety Committee Meetings are on the same day, every last Tuesday of each month at the Kalaniana Ole Beach Park, starting at six thirty and starting at seven thirty. So we do invite the community to come and participate and be a part of our committee meetings to better understand what the needs are as well as bring information from, uh, resources that are coming forward within the community as to how we can help. Uh, also, I would like to request if we could have, uh, NCO give us, uh, a resource understanding of the Kalaniana Ole Facilities as far as having the permit submitted so that we could have the facilities in time and know rather than the day of that the facility is not gonna be open to us. That way, we're, um, showing up professionally and showing up for our community appropriately. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Sure. Go ahead. We have, uh, two minutes left before we have to gather up.
Aloha, Rviela Ben Vides. Um, I just wanted to share about that because it's, um, not Pono when we as the community members, you're, we're asked to go ahead and make the meetings and come to the meetings. And when we go there, there's no building to go into the meetings. And we're told by the facility managers, paperwork was not submitted. So that's highly concerning when we're asking the community to come out. The community come out and then there's you know, blaming coming on and we don't want that happening for our community.
Yes, uh, we, we do apologize. Uh, there was, uh, something that had fallen through. Um, but since then, we have made adjustments uh, and we are working with NCO to ensure that doesn't happen again. So I apologize to anybody that did attend those meetings and there was no meeting. Uh, we have made adjustments on our end and so has NCO to prevent that from happening again. So color my apologies. Go ahead.
It's a standing issue at Kalaniana Ole Beach. It's a standing issue. In other board meetings and other board committee meetings, we stopped having it there because all the time they used to come late or not show up. It was none, it was like that for years now. So that's why I don't like having it there.
To us, and I would say the name because I'm not going, you know, it, it was from Walton and he said paperwork was not being done in a, in a proper manner. And so they could not go ahead and release the facility. So paperwork from here was not getting on time to him or to, to the facility, to use the facility. So, but regardless, we don't want no name blaming.
Even when we had the facilities, even when we had it on time, they still never showed up on time.
That was then. So the issue should have been already taken care of. Because what happened then, oh wait, how come it was not rectified?
Yeah. I agree. I agree. Again, I apologize on behalf. Um, and we have made, um, adjustments to make sure that doesn't happen again. So I, we apologize. We apologize. Um, but yes, community, at this time, it's ten PM. It's looks like we've gotten through our full agenda. So we want to thank you all. Our next neighborhood, uh, board meeting is Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, seven PM here at Nanakuli Library and as well as WebEx. At this time, our meeting is adjourned. Mahalo.